February 7th at 6:30 PM. And we're at the Women's Club on 46 Park Road in Fairfax. And I'd like to have a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
Councilmember Hellman.
Here.
Councilmember Cuttrano.
Present.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Here.
Mayor Kohler.
Here.
Thank you. And can I get a motion for approval of the agenda? I think Town Attorney Coulson wanted to make a statement. You have to speak really close to the mic.
I know. Is this good? Everybody can hear me? Okay, great. So we have an item on the directed referral item number four. And we have received communication from the applicant and his attorney that they didn't receive notice in time. And while we do believe we provided adequate notice sending it to the assessor's rolls address, we have discovered that the house that is still under construction at 79 Wood is the address where the notice went to because that's what's on the assessor's rolls. So we would like to continue this matter to a date certain. We suggest the 29th, a Thursday, the 29th of February at 6:30. Is that agreeable to the council?
And I would ask if anyone has a problem with that date. Seeing none, I think we're good for continuance to February 29th at 6:30. Do we need a motion to that effect?
That would be nice. And also, just to let you know that we're continuing to a date certain, but we will also renotice and we will contact the applicant to find out exactly where he would like to receive that notice.
Okay, thank you. So would someone like to do a motion to continue item four to February 29th at 6:30?
So moved.
And would someone like to second?
Second.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Cuttrano, Vice Mayor Blash. And Madam Clerk, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Right.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cuttrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay. So with that, could I have a motion to approve the rest of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Hellman and then second, Councilmember Cuttrano. And could we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cuttrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Thank you. Okay, I'll go ahead and read the land acknowledgement. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. And now I'll go ahead and read the meeting protocol. The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place them in the silent mode. The town council will review the agenda at 10 o'clock PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. Okay, I'm gonna open up open time for public ex... What? Oh, I'm sorry. Completely... Would people join me if you feel comfortable doing so in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Blash. You may be ready to take this over tomorrow. Okay, open time for public expression. It'll be up to 30 minutes. This is a time to address the council on matters not on the agenda. All comments are limited to two minutes. The council is not permitted to take action, and state law strictly limits the right of the council to discuss any un-agendaized item. This is Government Code Section 54954.2. If there are still raised hands after 30 minutes, open time will be continued to the end of the agenda. And I want to remind folks that we're all neighbors here, and let's be as kind as possible. So with that, would somebody like to speak on open time? And remember, you have two minutes. And Madam Clerk, if you could set the timer... Oh, you did. Thank you.
I doubt I'll need the two minutes. And it should be three. While you may be looking at a lot of different interpretations, interpretation as far as the courts have ruled that unless you have an extremely long agenda or expecting many people to contribute their observations on an issue, two minutes is insufficient. This has been brought up to you time and again. You also just decreased the agenda by 25%, and I don't understand. There you have the legal backing to limit time to two minutes, especially on the consent calendar, which you again violate California codes, which I have brought up and repeated previously.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Rick Hamer, Downtown Fairfax. On December 6th, 2023, item four, which was entitled "Accept Report on Renter Protections Implementation Estimates. Discuss/Consider Pilot Implementation of Rent Stabilization Program and Adopt a Resolution Authorizing the Town Manager to Enter Into an Agreement." I'll stop there because who... An agreement with who is the question? This item was continued. It's now the second regular meeting since that meeting, which means there's been three opportunities for this item to be presented. So could we please get back into the batting order here and schedule this for another regular meeting? Next one would be very nice. "We can expect a barrage of petitions over spiraling insurance and utility rates, and it's not fair to any rental property landlord, tenant, not to have a functioning petition process in place." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. I'd like to echo what Rick just said and what Mark just said and point out a few little calculations. There's not... There's 13 items on tonight's consent calendar, and it looks like, this is for the audience and people who haven't read this, three items on the regular agenda. That's a little lopsided. That's 120 seconds for 13 items. That's nine seconds per item. I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine people here tonight. If you really wanted to have open and transparent government and listen to your citizens, the people who elected you, you'd give us more time to talk. Not quite sure why that's falling on deaf ears here. Other jurisdictions in Marin allow more time to talk. I know that Councilman Cuttrano, acting as mayor, limited the time. He did so because he had a lot of people in opposition to him, and he wanted to get through the meeting. You're allowed to do that if you want to do it. It's not best practices, but he was allowed to do it. Nobody sued him. Right now, though, Mark's pointed out many a time, this is not best practices. This is not allowing your population to speak. So I'd like you to think about that. That took up a lot of my time that I could have spent talking about other things important to the town. We've got some fundamental flaws, how things are being done here. They need to be addressed if we want to move forward, if you want people to vote for you in the forthcoming elections or anywhere in your future careers. How much time do I have left? Okay, I want to say I miss Rose Tabor. Sorry that you guys forced her out of town. I want to say that I'm grateful to Toni De Francis for all of her long work here.
That's on consent. Thank you. I want to remind folks that this is a hybrid meeting, so there are people on Zoom as well. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Council. I would like to take this opportunity to convince you guys why you, as individuals living in Fairfax and representing your constituents in Fairfax, want to vote no on Measure A. So as you all know, that the principle to improve our high schools, principally the three, not the five, represents...
So we don't do political campaigning here?
I'm just sharing my opinion, since I'm a taxpayer here, so if I may, please.
I... Town Attorney, we're not allowed to have political campaigns here.
All I'm doing is sharing my opinion.
You're giving a political advocacy speech, Town Attorney?
You need to speak to things that are within the jurisdiction of the council, just not on the agenda.
And this is not within our jurisdiction.
This is something within the citizens of Fairfax, so I'll certainly phrase it.
It's not within the jurisdiction of the council, so if you want to move on to a different topic, please do so.
Excuse me. Please allow me to finish. If there was a problem in the creek that affects the people of town...
That's correct. That's different. Do you want to speak to that? Do you want to speak to that? I've already told you, this is not within the jurisdiction of the council.
I'm not asking the town to make a resolution or vote in a certain way.
Michael, this is political advocacy. It's not within our jurisdiction. Please sit down or move to another topic. We can start the time back at two if you would like to make a comment within our jurisdiction.
Instead of saying to convince you guys to vote, may I please just give a breakdown that I think is beneficial to all the people?
No. Okay, thank you. We're gonna cut off your time. Thank you.
Okay, then I'll speak about something else. The poor actions of this town, the division at this town council has created that I've never seen in 22 years. And even something like this, where I want to try to explain to people that might not fully understand, especially seeing the rhetoric on both sides, that I can break something down, the town doesn't want to hear it because it may not fit with your narrative. But your narrative is alienating a great deal of this town. I see many different things that you guys want to do, and I'm sure it starts with the best of intentions, but look at the result. Look at our state of California. Look where we're going. And when people take the time up here to say, hey, I'm gonna give you my time, whether you want here or not, but just possibly a small amount that could resonate and say, oh, that's curious, maybe I should look into this and better educate myself. We try, but no. It's kind of like I want to do things behind the closed scenes, have a discussion, decide how I want to vote in advance, and just slam it through and basically placate us and not really listening to take our input to make your decisions. And I really think that's very poor governance. I would hope that this council, after many years and being advised of many things, participating in a lot of things, could make better decisions. I think you guys are at a disadvantage by having the same people in the same committees with all the same agencies, Regency or not, so we're not getting different thinking. We're staying in the same like-minded groups. You're not having somebody come out that'll say, oh, I disagree with your opinion because what about this? You're not hearing another narrative. You're pushing forth one narrative, which is your collective narrative. You need to have diversity of thought and speech as well as diversity of color. So I really suggest even here, when I want to come up and share something that does affect our town, we don't shut it down.
Thank you.
That's bad governance and insecurity.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Liz Fronberger, Fairfax. I just want to make a general comment about ridge top development of any type in Fairfax. My husband and I, in 96, 97, were chased out of our home for nine months because of a significant slide just below Oak Springs Development, which is above the Marin Oaks Development. Much of that, much of those ridges, not just that one, and those gullies and valleys and ridge tops are of the same kind of soil and same kind of geological, you know, makeup. Thank you. And so I don't think that you guys knew this, but last winter, we had three new slides on our street in San Gabriel, and I just had a slide on my property with this last storm. I'm not whining, I'm just letting you know that this information, I think, is really important going forward because I've also pulled out my old geotechnical surveys and reports from 96, 97 and reviewed them, and we really are at a very high risk for significant slides, popouts, that kind of thing. Popouts aren't so, in and of themselves, so important or so terrible, but they do, they can really impact different situations in different buildings. And I would just also remind you, thinking about any kind of ridge top building anywhere along here and thinking about the heavy trucks that'd be going up and down for years, given the, given how our town is built in these areas, would really have as, may, I shouldn't say really because I'm not an expert, may have a really significant impact on the stability of those homes, i.e. doors not closing properly, et cetera. So that's, I just want to park that in your brains. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. Is there any other speakers in the room? Seeing none, could someone turn off that mic, please? Thank you. Are there speakers on Zoom for open time?
There are quite a few speakers, yes.
Okay, so I want to just remind folks, we started at 6:35, and we will end open time at 5:00 after 7:00, and then it will go to the end of the meeting. So let's see how many we can get done.
The first speaker is Kristin, followed by Judy. Kristin, you're unmuted.
Hi. On Monday, at the Marin County Commission on Aging General Meeting, there will be a presentation on the overview of the 2023 Marin County Older Adults Needs Assessment. Jason Kearns and Courtney Harwood from Davis Research, who led the survey, will present. The results from this needs assessment will be used by the Marin County Area Agency on Aging, also called the AAA, to create their upcoming four-year plan and goals related to older adults in Marin County. This presentation and the meeting are open to the public. The meeting will be held at the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority at 1600 Los Gamos Road, Suite 335 in San Rafael. The Friends of the Fairfax Library are sponsoring a mini senior fair at the Fairfax Library on April 13th from 11:30 AM to 1:00 PM. They plan to have tables with information about services and resources for older adults, including Age Friendly Fairfax, Love is the Answer, Ross Valley Villages Marin and others. They'll have a raffle and light refreshments, so hold the date and share information with others who may benefit from attending. This is Kristin Amlee, the Fairfax representative on the Marin County Commission on Aging. I can be reached via the Fairfax Town Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Judy, followed by Jim. Judy, you are unmuted.
Thank you for giving me a moment to speak. I'm calling as a European-American, a son of European-Americans and also grandson of European-Americans who...
So this is supposed to be items within the subject matter? I'm giving jurisdiction?
I'm asking... You're interrupting me. I'm asking, you gotta let me make my point, please. I'm going to be asking for a resolution. Okay, I'm giving you a warning. I am asking for a time to speak here, and you're cutting me off. I'm asking for your council to give a resolution on a specific issue, and you're not giving me a chance to mention it. Is that not within your purview? I'm asking you about a resolution. You've done those for other groups. I'm asking you for my group. Are you cutting me off?
I'm gonna cut you off now.
Okay, please allow...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jim, followed by Randall. Jim, you're unmuted.
Good evening. I would like to ask the council to draft a resolution and dedicate June 8th as USS Liberty Day. That was the day when Israel attacked the Navy ship called the USS Liberty, which killed 34 Americans.
This is not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the county of the council.
Asking you to draft a resolution is within your jurisdiction.
Again, I'm giving you a warning. I'm cutting you off.
Do you draft a resolution?
Next speaker.
The next speaker is Randall, followed by Bill.
Good evening, City Council. I would just like to ask a simple question, not directly to the council, but yeah, to the council and everyone else in the room.
No questions.
Oh, okay, then I can redirect it. I can rephrase it. I'm just curious as to why the city council and our state government take direction from the ADL, a Jewish organization established in 1913 to protect a Jewish child murdering pedophile.
Okay, I'm cutting you off. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Travis, followed by Jim. Travis, you're unmuted.
I am unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, are you okay? You sound a little ruffled there.
No questions.
Just go ahead.
No questions. Okay, no questions. Okay, so I would like to address, first of all, I'd like to say, you know, I am a witness for the way you treated that, a few callers here, and you hide behind subject matter jurisdiction. I think you need to speak to your municipal attorney about that. I think that your, you know, your actions are arbitrary and capricious and abusive. So just, just take, take a note of that. So moving forward. Okay, so I would like, there's, I would like to address how the city council is going to be preparing to pay reparations to the victims of slavery.
So this is not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. I'm giving you a warning.
Okay, okay. Thank you for the warning. Subject matter jurisdiction, I will be sure to study that tonight. But I'm wondering when the Jews are gonna pay the blacks for the slavery.
Okay, I'm cutting you off. This is your warning. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, also, I'd like to point out that this is disrupting the orderly conduct of this meeting, in addition to not being on subject matter jurisdiction of this council.
Thank you. Okay, next speaker, please.
Before, before you go, Christine, just a quick question. How many hands are raised?
Several of the speakers who have already spoken have raised their hands again. Of the raised hands, there are...
Are there new raised hands?
About four raised hands that we haven't seen yet.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Gabe, followed by Annalise. Gabe, you're unmuted.
Hello, and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Gabe Stutman. I represent the Jewish SF as well as the Habad Center of Marin. I just wanted to inform everyone that we will be hosting a screening of a documentary called Europa, The Last Battle, you know, pertaining to the rise of anti-Semitism here.
Again, this is disrupting the orderly, the orderly conduct of the meeting. It's not within our subject matter jurisdiction. I'm giving you a warning.
Okay, it clearly is, but you can, you can see the documentary at europatthelastbattle.net.
Again, this, you're disrupting the meeting.
You can also go to GTVflyers.com.
Let's try the next speaker.
The next speaker is Annalise, followed by June. Annalise, you're unmuted.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Phenomenal. You know, I think it's really important to participate in your local government, and I have in every city I've ever lived. I have never seen somebody cut every single person off, even the man in person. He was speaking to you guys, and you just shut them down. I don't think any person online has said a complete sentence. That's a drastic overreach of the city council. I would like to point out that it's very hard for you to serve a public, you are unwilling to listen to. Not only does it violate the Brown Act, but it is disgusting. You can sit there high and mighty like that. Absolutely disgusting.
Do you have a topic you want to cover?
I don't know how you live with yourself and call yourself a public servant.
Okay.
Go ahead, interrupt me. Take up more of my time. I would love for you to do that. I would love you to push your disgusting feminine agenda and act as though you have the right to cut me off, you fucking bitch.
You're disrupting the council. I'm cutting you off.
You're a cut...
Haven't heard that for a while. Okay. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is June, followed by Rex. June, you're unmuted.
...caller, and this blonde bitch is a fucking kike bitch. Fuck you cunt. You're un-American, and you need free speech.
Again, this is, all of this commentary is disrupting the orderly conduct of this meeting, and it is not under the subject matter jurisdiction of this council. Comments must be kept to that.
One more speaker? Two more? Oh, boy. Okay, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Rex, followed by Robert. Rex, you're unmuted.
Good evening, City Council. I think this definitely falls under your jurisdiction that the mayor is a kike, niggers aren't human, and watch Europa the Last Battle.
Okay, you're disrupting the meeting. I'm cutting you off. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Robert. Robert, you're unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Man, those callers previously, I was gonna say, this is Salt Lake City, right? And if this is Salt Lake City, I thought this is Mormon country, not ran by a bunch of kikes working for the ADL.
Okay, so that you're disrupting the meeting, and you're not within a subject matter jurisdiction. I'm cutting you off. Thank you. Any other speakers?
No.
Okay, just for folks in the room and folks listening online, I want to apologize for what you just heard. This is an organized group of people who have come to this meeting before on Zoom, so it's not something we advocate, and we try to give people warnings. So I did the best I could under those circumstances. Thank you. Well, there's something called free speech, so we have to do what we can, and I think we might have another open time speaker in the room. You can go ahead, but you need to push the button. And can you set the timer, please? Go ahead.
So I would like, again, to ask the town to consider taking a resolution for ceasefire for the bombing that's been going on in Gaza. I, you know, maybe I'm the only one who thinks that it shouldn't be funding this, but it's just totally horrendous, and they are...
That's also not under subject matter jurisdiction.
Thank you.
Well, it's not?
It's not.
What do you mean it's not? For the town to, all the towns that have been taking these resolutions for ceasefire...
Just let her finish. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was just gonna say that it's not like they have bomb shelters that they can go under. They are just being bombed, and it's really horrendous, so...
Thank you, Lainson.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so there are no speakers online, are there, Madam Clerk? Thanks for cutting off the button, Michael. Okay, well, that was interesting. Okay, so we're gonna move on to item one, which is consideration of a donation of $25,000 to the Fairfax, well, there's an error, San Anselmo Children's Center, solely for the purpose of purchasing the property at 199 Portius Avenue, Fairfax, from the Ross Valley School District, so they may continue to operate the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center at the location and adopt a resolution making findings as appropriate. And since I wrote the staff report, am I supposed to go over the staff report?
Yes, indeed.
Okay. Oh, we need Councilmember Hellman to make a statement?
Yes, I've prepared a short statement, and I'm recusing myself from this agenda item this evening. So I'll be brief, but I did prepare the following. I'm currently working under a short-term contract for the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. I appreciate and recognize a few concerns that have been raised as far as a potential conflict of interest. As soon as I learned of the agenda item proposing funding for the center, I knew I would recuse myself from taking action. action this evening on item number one. I will also share a short list of facts to offer transparency and hopefully clarify any questions related to my involvement with the Ross Valley School District and the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. For the council, I serve as liaison to the district. While this has no official role description, I interpret the responsibilities as making a commitment to attending the Board of Trustees meetings and sharing back with staff and council through the monthly reports and issues and opportunities that they should be aware of. An example of this was May of 2022. I shared with staff and the mayor that it was anticipated at the May 31, 2022 meeting that the board would pass a resolution recommending the property be surplus and acknowledgement of exemption from SEQA and notify of the intent to sell. I shared a notice to the town, I shared that the notice would be delivered to the town thereafter, providing information related to the Naylor Act, and that the town of Fairfax would have the opportunity to bid on the property. And after the council, the council took action on that item, I continue to stay abreast of the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center matter through my relationships with the school board trustees and through outreach to the leadership at the center and the Marin County Office of Education. Recently, or at the August 30th, 2023 Ross Valley School Board meeting, upon learning that the MCOE would not be acquiring the property, I offered public comment that there were many community members who were highly skilled and willing to support finding a solution. In the following weeks, I assembled a community task force, or Brain Trust, to support the center. I joined the MCOE Task Force and became active with the center, offering pro bono support. Thereafter, the center and its governing board determined it was necessary to hire a contractor to manage various work streams related to administration, website, communication, and more. I was offered a three-month contract that has been extended through March. My contract with the center is and was for work performance relying on my personal and professional skills and not related to or contingent on my affiliation with the town council. Thank you.
Okay, well, we'll excuse you, and we'll let you know when you'll be in your car. Okay. Thank you, and we'll drink your Coke while you're gone. No, we won't. Okay, we'll wait till you leave. Thank you for your statement, Councilmember Hellman. So with that, I'll go ahead and give the staff report. And some of it, you all have probably read, but the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center was founded by Ethel Seiderman in 1973 in response to a group of parents in Marin County who recognized the need for an affordable childcare center. It has operated at 199 Portius Avenue in Fairfax for more than 50 years. They provide high-quality subsidized childcare and education services for children from infancy through the fifth grade, and the center has leased the former Deer Parks Elementary School site from Ross Valley School District for many years. Most of you have probably followed this through the newspapers and such, but early in 2022, a lawyer for the Ross Valley School District advised the school district to terminate the lease of the children's center due to what felt were fire safety and liability issues. At the time, Jason Weber, who was then our Ross Valley Fire Chief, and still is the county's Fire Chief, stated publicly that the center was as safe as many other schools in the county that are down one-way roads. His advice to the Ross Valley School District began a series of discussions and public meetings that the school district held for almost two years, with many speaking in support of retaining the children's center at the location. So shortly after he took office, the Marin County Education Superintendent John Carroll announced that his office would seriously explore actually purchasing and renovating the property with the idea that it could be leased back continually to the children's center. They conducted what was called a Field Act assessment, which is something required for public K-12 schools, and through that assessment found that there was $14 million or so of renovations needed, should it be used as a public school. So a few weeks before the lease expiration date in 2023, in August 2023, the Superintendent Carroll then announced that they would no longer pursue that option at all. And it was surprising at that time, given the significant renovations that were felt were necessary, that the Ross Valley School District felt that the property was worth $3 million. There's been several supporters of the center and others, which include the Community Foundation, Marin County, Foley and Lardner in LA have offered pro bono legal expertise, and a number of folks who've been looking first for a suitable location, an alternate suitable location. After looking at more than 20 properties, they weren't able to find anything that was even close to adequate. So instead, they redoubled their efforts with the idea of offering to purchase the property from Ross Valley School District. They also hired a bunch of skilled experts, an architect, structural engineer, construction company, to determine what the cost of repairs would be were it used as a childcare center, not as a public school. And our building official, Mark Lockaby, also visited the site and said renovations could be done over time without necessitating moving the kids off the property, so they wouldn't have to bring in portables. So what also happened very recently is the children's center delivered an offer to the school district, which included a discounted price of about $1.6 million to purchase the property with a non-refundable deposit, and with provisions that the land and structures would be sold as is, and reversionary provisions, what they understood the school district wanted, which would be that if the property could only be used as a childcare center, and with, after 17 years, it could revert to the school district for use as a public school, should they decide they needed it. So in mid-January, the Ross Valley School District Board had a meeting. There was a presentation by the childcare center and also by the attorney for the school district. The trustees went into closed session, and when they came out, I think it was around 1:00 in the morning, reported out that they voted to evict the center. What has struck me, I have worked on the children's center for about 10 years through a HUD committee I sit on with the county that gives out HUD monies for public service projects and capital projects for worthy charitable organizations. So there's a small amount of money that typically goes to the children's center to transport kids. It's been rated, and you can look at the resolution, I'm not gonna read it, but I spent quite a bit of time looking up the public benefits of the children's center. John Carroll has said it has the best preschool of anywhere in Marin County. They provide after-school programs for kids. About half of the children that are registered live in Fairfax, and these are low-income kids. Many of the parents work more than two jobs. Some of the parents are homeless. And I've sat there and listened to testimony of kids who have spent their whole lives at the children's center and how they've thrived. One young man coming back from Harvard testifying. The center has changed people's lives, and it's our hope, I understand there's still hope, that the children's center will be able to purchase the property from the Ross Valley School District. And so it's our hope to send a message by offering a donation of $25,000, which is totally conditioned on only if the school district is willing to enter into an agreement to sell the property. So it would only be transferred in that event, and it could only be used as a childcare center. So that's what we have before us, and I spent quite a significant amount of time looking up the public benefits, not all of which I've mentioned tonight, because there is something called a gift to public funds, and there's always a worry that you're just giving away public funds. A few months ago, we put together, and I worked on that as well, looking at donating money to the Marin Open Space Trust for the acquisition of Upper Hawthorne Canyon. It was $12,000. And there were a lot of public benefits that would benefit people in Fairfax as well as San Anselmo, which is where the property is. Tonight, we have something on the agenda about purchasing and installing banners that will benefit the chamber. That's also, there's public benefits for people in Fairfax. The center is helping raise our children, maybe not my children, maybe not your children, but it's helping bringing a lot of diverse kids, as well as people who just won't have anywhere else to go. So it's our hope that we can send a message of support and just be one of the many supporters for something that truly benefits people in Fairfax and the children in Ross Valley. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions, just questions at this point that council members may have, before we open it up to public comments. Yes, Councilmember Cuttrano.
Yeah, so first, thank you, Mayor Kohler, for writing the report and all the work you've put into this. I know it's an incredible amount of work. I had a number of questions, so hopefully I can get through them fairly quickly, and I suspect, are you the sole person answering questions, given that it's your report?
Well, we do have Heidi Tomsky, who's the executive director from the children's center, and Eric Swininger, who is our, you're the program operations direct, director for the center. So if you have other questions, we can ask them to come up.
Great. Okay. First question, it's sort of extensive throughout both the staff report or the council memo and the resolution, but like, early on, the acronym is stated as FXSACC, but then it kind of flip-flops every paragraph and throughout the resolution. I'm curious, is that, is there, is it supposed to be just FXSACC, or is it, because it's FSACC in a lot of the?
Could have been a typo on my part.
Okay, I just didn't know if there was, if there was a reason for it, but, because I'm seeing the posters around town, that's FSACC, so I'm just trying to make sure it's all cohesive, and maybe we could correct that if we move forward tonight, because it's throughout, but just want to check on that. Curious, unlike the, the other examples that you've provided, one being a donation to Marin Open Space Trust, and another being the banners in support of the Chamber of Commerce, you know, most Marin Open Space Trust came to our Fairfax Open Space Committee meeting requesting that kind of support, and that was a request that came to us from the Open Space Committee, and similarly, the mayor has standing monthly meetings with the chamber, and so I assume that that was generative, and that the beneficiary was requesting this, you know, at the chamber level. But I'm wondering, for this particular donation, I don't know how timely it is. I don't know if this is enough money. I don't know how we came to $25,000, if it just happened to slot in really well into Measure F, but I'm, I guess I'm wondering, was this a request that came, or is this just strategic on the part of the town to try to indicate to Ross Valley School District that like, we want to support or have some skin in the game? Yeah, I'm just wondering how it came to the council.
So I have met with Heidi and Eric, and we discussed the potential of a donation, and I came to that figure thinking that it was something within the realm of affordability, as, as well as discussing it with the town manager and what we could afford by providing support primarily to the children's center.
Got it. And I don't know if you have the answer to this, but I'm curious, in the grand scheme of the fundraising to date to, I know that there was a commitment with a down payment, or the 10%, that was like, hard money, but like, of this $25,000, how much does that help in the grants? Like, can we give more money, or what? Like, I'm just trying to understand, like?
Well, I think, why don't we have Heidi and/or Eric come up and talk about the commitments that they have, but surely, if we wanted to, we could donate the full amount. We don't have that kind of money, and I don't think it's, it's really, it's a small gesture that is also a significant gesture on our part. More than $5,000 for the chamber, more than $12,000 for Upper Hawthorne, but when we think about the value that the children's center brings to children in Fairfax and in the Ross Valley, I think that's really significant. So it was a number that I came up with, thinking that it was not beyond our means, and it would make a strong statement.
Got it. Okay. I would love to hear from Heidi, or?
Well, let's, let's see if other folks have questions of me first, and then we'll ask them to come up.
Okay, I have more questions for you as well. So one of the questions is, about a week and a half ago, I spoke with Supervisor Rice about the county pursuing federal funding to evaluate other sites, I believe it was, for the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center. So I'm just curious, like, have you been in touch with the county? I just want to make sure if there's active lobbying being done in DC related to this project that we're not working at cross purposes. So I just wanted to check on that, too.
I've spoken to Katie Rose at length.
So this is all good?
Many times, yes.
Okay.
She's very supportive of this particular
And the federal funding is in support of this?
I'm not familiar with federal funding, but I think what they're doing is looking for quite a lot of funding to try to make this whole. We would only be doing a small portion. Remember, the offer on the table that wasn't accepted was about $1.6 million, and I know that they do have significant funds, but they're not close. So they're looking at ways of cobbling together other funding.
Okay, I was under the impression that there was a planning grant that was being applied for at the federal level.
It may be that it would go to the committee that I sit on, but there, we only get $1.8 million total in the county for every other worthy purpose. So it would only be a small piece, if that's what she's talking, I haven't talked to her about that specifically.
Okay, that's helpful. And I'm also wondering, so this money only goes through if this particular site is acquired. Are there any other contingencies? Like, you mentioned the, the Field Act component, and my understanding was that the Field Act implementation was divorced from the inspections that are done, whether they were by Ross Valley School District or by Marin County Office of Education. And I, I'm wondering, like, in the event that there's more that meets the eye in terms of rehabilitation of the facilities there, are there any contingencies for the town if that money goes hard, it goes to them for acquisition, and then shortly thereafter, something doesn't work out with the facility?
There's a couple. So the contingencies, and I'll have Janet speak, because I see her hands moving, is, the contingency is, it would solely be for the acquisition. It's not for a, you know, deposit that we would lose. We won't give it unless this is really going through, and it has to be used as a childcare center. It could not be flipped to something different. And there's also, in the staff report, we talk about an agreement that the town would enter into with the childcare center, should all this start working. But Town Attorney Coulson, would you like to speak on this matter?
Well, I just heard mention of the Field Act, and so my understanding of the Field Act is that it is for public school instruction. It's not for a nonprofit, for a daycare, for a private school. It covers facilities that are being used for public school instruction, the actual hours of public instruction. So not after-school programs, not, you know, extra things in the summer.
Yes, I understand the distinction between the public school and the nonprofit piece. I think that what I was getting to, and maybe you could answer this piece, is that the inspections, like, uncovering in an inspection is that the inspections, like uncovering in an inspection, like issues with structural integrity of a property, that's divorced from the implementation of Field Act retrofits or rehabilitation of that property, correct?
That property, let me just make this clear. I worked on Department of Education things for a number of years in the state. Field Act has nothing to do with this property in the future. If this property goes through as a childcare center, the Field Act assessments are meaningless. What I didn't explain very well, because I was trying to rush through this, is that the childcare center, with their supporters, have conducted other assessments that show what would need to be done in the event that they move forward. So they have a phased approach for what renovations need to be done. They are completely separate from Field Act. The Field Act didn't uncover anything that would change what their approach is right now.
And that would be helpful at a later point in time to get info from the Children's Center. Because we have no supporting documentation, right? There are no supplements, there's no information, there's no request for funds. So I have to ask these questions?
No, I think that's fine. One of the things I did was, I put the link to the Children's Center website where the presentation was that covered the types of things that they would do in the phases. I was trying not to make this like 20 pages, which I usually do. So I apologize for that. What other questions do you have?
No, I think that's fine for now. I just, I look forward to hearing more information from the Children's Center themselves.
Okay, and other questions from council members? All right, well, let's have Heidi, oh, excuse me, Town Attorney Coulson.
Well, I just want to say that before, I'm sorry if I am interrupting, but I just wanted to say that before you go to public comment again, it would be appropriate to give a warning about the types of comments that are not appropriate.
Okay, but before we do that, I want Heidi and Eric to come up and answer some of the questions that Councilmember Cuttrano had.
Thank you.
So Heidi and/or Eric, would you mind coming up to the mic? Heidi Tomsky, Eric Sweninger. And I know I have not pronounced your name right, and you need to press the button.
Got it.
Actually, you're doing quite well, Sweninger.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Heidi, take it away. Did you get those questions, or do you want to have them repeated?
Yep, please repeat them.
I think one of them was, what kind of funding do you have today?
Yeah, so for acquisition, we have commitments from Marin Community Foundation. We have a pledge of $1 million from them. We have a pledge of $500,000 from the County of Marin. And our board has pledged $500,000 out of our reserves. So right now, we have $2 million. We're working towards three, working, the appraisal's $3 million. So as close as we can get to that. And we're working with some other partners also that haven't officially come in yet.
Great, thank you so much. And could you speak a little bit to that last question that we were talking about? Since there's nothing in the public pocket as it relates to the myriad of different inspections that have taken place and caused all sorts of conversation in the ether, could you speak to like the inspections that y'all have done? And what needs to be done to rehabilitate or maintain that property specifically for your facilities?
For us?
Yeah.
Do you want to speak? He can speak better than you.
I mean, we have hired some very reputable companies that specifically work with schools and have done a lot of work with schools. Mail and Construction, Bondi. Studio Bondi Architecture and the structural engineer, I apologize, I can't think of the name right now, specifically have done a lot of work with, doing work with schools and are very familiar with the type of properties we have. We do not fall under the Field Act. Not that that matters a whole lot, because we still would have to do, I think we still believe absolutely that we need to, over the next few years, we need to put some work, real work into the structures. But that being said, the town of Fairfax, Mark Lockaby, has assured us that it is our choice as how we go about doing that. And so what's a huge advantage for us is that we would be able to do one phase at a time instead of having to do the entire. One of the things with the Field Act would be, it would have to be all done all at the same time. We're able to do it in phases. So we can move classrooms, we can move the office into the, we have a couple portables on the building. We can move the office into the portables, we can move the classrooms into the office and a meeting room that we use typically so that we don't have to disrupt our services to our families. We serve all low-income families. We've been serving families for over 50 years in this community.
So Eric or Heidi, I know in the presentation that was done for the school district, you talked about some of the work that would be done in those phases. And maybe you're not prepared to do that tonight. Apologize for not putting that in the staff report. Can either one of you kind of highlight some of those things? I know there were three phases, what kinds of elements of work? Because it's not all the same as what was in the Field Act assessment.
Yeah, we've moved really into two phases, although Phase 1 is Part A and Part B. One of the first things we would do is take care of some of the more serious safety issues. One of the first things would be part of Phase 1 would be the parking lot, which is so that fire engines have a safe way to get in there and maneuver around. And then the first building, we would be doing roofing and shearing, which would support that first building. We would also, one of the very first things we'd be doing also is replacing the fire alarm system to the highest-grade fire alarm system that we can put in. That would be throughout the entire center. Also, part of the first phase would be replacing the electrical and some of the foundation pieces that really need to be done in order to complete the rest of the project, which would be Phase 2.
Is that helpful?
Very helpful, yeah, thank you. And sorry for calling you up to do that.
That's great, there'll be some ADA stuff also that has to happen in that first phase also.
And I'm curious, so from the staff report, thank you again for the staff report. The, it sounds like there was a rejection of the, or there was a vote to evict. And curious, what's the timing of all of this that we're, is it looming uncertainty for y'all? Or, yeah?
Are you, you mean specifically with regards to the eviction?
Yeah, with the eviction and like your response to it. I assume that you all, in the numbers that you've provided, there's money that's being gained. We're talking about adding more money to that kitty tonight. So is it, I assume you're going back with a different offer or something like that?
That was our plan.
What happens with the eviction piece?
I mean, there's a couple of different things about, first of all, that is a process.
I see.
It's not a, it's not a cut and dried in 30 days, you're done, you know? It's a long process that will go through courts and systems that have to be done. But, you know, the school district also, if we were to be able to present an offer that they would start to consider, they can stop, slow down, they can halt any of those proceedings at any point, I believe. So our hope is, before the next board meeting, we are able to present an offer that they are willing to take a much better look at. So far, they have not really accepted any of our offers so far.
And so far, they have not actually started the process of the eviction, is that correct? To your knowledge?
They have sent an official letter, which is the first step, yes.
Right, I just read that their attorney said the process is four to six months, and he hadn't started it other than that letter.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay, other questions? Councilmember Cuttrano before Vice Mayor Blash?
No more for me, thank you so much.
Okay, Vice Mayor Blash?
Yeah, just quickly, so when they, you know, denied your request to purchase the property, what were the key reasons or what did they want different than what you had?
They actually didn't deny the offer. They didn't actually say anything about it. All they did is, after coming out of closed session, all they did say was that they voted 5-0 to begin the process of eviction. They really didn't say anything specific related to the offer that we made.
Let me just say, the meeting, I understand after your board president presented, I understand the attorney for the school district presented and pointed out some areas where he said you didn't have documentation supporting that you had certain funds available, is that correct? I mean, I know the closed session, it was just very simple. But I understand his presentation, he pointed out some areas where he didn't feel that you had.
The document, we did provide documentation, but they did not accept the type of documentation we provided.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and that one other thing I'd like to say, you know, Eric referring to the funding for renovations and that Supervisor Rice has had a conversation with Jared Huffman, and he had indicated that there's likely dollars at the federal level that we could tap into for renovations. Though nothing formal has happened, but there are feelers being put out and there's a likelihood that there is funding for that.
Okay, and that may be what you were hearing.
Federal funding.
But that's renovations.
For renovations, yes, the renovations and repairs. I mean, everyone can agree, which is a good thing, that there is a lot of deferred maintenance on the property that needs to be done. There's, nobody can deny that, you know? And I don't think we have to get into whose responsibility it is for that. It's just a fact that it has to be done. We're willing to do it, and we certainly appreciate the town considering coming in as a partner in helping us acquire the property to continue providing childcare services for families, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Heidi or Eric? Councilmember Ackerman?
Yeah, thank you for your work on this. Wish you the best. The, as Mayor Kohler mentioned in the staff report and in her presentation, there's the concept, I'm not totally clear on where this concept comes from, that after 17 years, the Ross Valley School District would have the option of acquiring the property back. So is that part of what would be negotiated in a purchase? Or would that, where does that come from? That's one question. And the other question is, how would that work if this is not a lease that you're contemplating? This is actually a purchase. So it would be, they would repurchase it back in 17 years if they decided they needed it? And, yeah, just wondering about that.
So isn't that correct, that that was part of their list of wants, was a reversionary principle? But go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The school district has insisted that there's a reversionary clause in two different ways, that they would be able to take the property back if need be. If for some reason, their enrollment numbers had, you know, gone up, you know, relatively dramatically or if, you know, if there was some damage to one of their schools for some reason like that. And then part of that would be, you know, they would, it wouldn't be that they would just take it back for free. They would have to put back the money that we had put into the center. And there would be a certain amount of time we would have to vacate the property.
Thank you. Okay, so I want to say, I'll open it up to public comment. But first, I want to ask, how many people in the room want to, you guys can sit down, thank you very much. How many people in the room want to speak on this topic? So we have five or so, six. How many people on Zoom, ask them how many people want to speak on this topic, to raise their hands?
We have three raised hands now.
Okay, well, I think we'll go ahead. We're going to do two minutes per. And thank you all, and let's get started. Is there anything else? Town Attorney Coulson, you wanted me to add? Okay, well, go ahead. It looks like we have Larry Bragman.
You do. Good evening, everybody, Larry Bragman, 30 Hickory Road. And I'm currently on the FSACC Board of Directors. So I'm fairly new to the board and some of the details. But I am familiar with some of the public safety aspects of the purchase. Marin Water, for example, tested the water pressure, added a hydrant to address some of the fire safety concerns. Safety is really the first priority. It is in Phase 1 of the renovations, of the planned renovations. I participated in a walkthrough of the campus with the engineers and the construction people. And one of the differences is, when you're not under the Field Act, it's a little more nimble as far as how you can make the improvements. For example, some of the seismic improvements can be done with structural steel and not completely rebuilding the communal gym room. So that was a huge concern of the county. Our engineers feel it can be handled with structural steel. Some of the issues with safety glass can be handled with what I would call value engineering. Instead of replacing the whole light, you can use certain safety film that will meet safety standards and protect people. So the private aspect of this actually has some real advantages for the success of this program and the success of the project. And I would say, if there's any concern about gift of public funds, you know, the Fairfax-San Anselmo Children's Center has been receiving federal and state funds for decades. So there is no question that this agency, this nonprofit, is providing very important public benefits for the town. And I really appreciate your leadership on this, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. Everybody here, I think, I think everybody here wants to help out the Children's Center, just like everybody wants to raise money for the wall property. I want to put some things in perspective. $25,000 is also a number mentioned twice in the reports, which we won't get to talk about the financial reports very much. $25,000 went to Gelati. $25,000.
That's outside of this topic. Please stay on topic.
Please don't interrupt me, I'd like my time back. This is important. May I resume and have my time back?
Could you just go ahead?
$25,000 also is a whole budget for seniors in the Rec Department for the year. That's just for reference sake. As I said, everybody wants to find a solution here, but a lot of political positionings going on here, and some things are being misrepresented. And I think that's hurting the case for good people.
Please speak to the council directly.
There is a conflict of interest, clear conflict of interest. And there's two or three letters out there, including from somebody on the Measure, I believe it's F Oversight Committee, who is the CPA Barbara Petty. She says the committee doesn't meet. I'd like to read it in the record, but you won't give me time. It's important that the public know about this. Sarah Tuchbury also has spoken against the gift. This could be structured in a different way that would support the Children's Center. It could be a loan that might be forgivable in certain circumstances. There's a more sophisticated way to do this that wouldn't have the conflict of interest, that wouldn't be paying Ms. Hellman, which is really highly questionable conduct. Next, there's a question that, in this report, that talks about how surprised you are at the property value being $3 million. This is misleading. There's an appraisal that the RVSD had done, just like there's an appraisal for the wall property.
Thank you, thank you.
I'd like my time back.
You got it back, thank you. You did, yes. Okay, next speaker, please.
Michael McIntosh. First off, I support the Children's Center. I also invited them down to my property so that they could temporarily put their school there for up to five years, that they would not lose their CUP by operating in Fairfax. That said, this subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the Ross Valley School District, not the town of Fairfax. This issue is very political. Those were the two units or descriptions that you used to shut me down speaking on Measure M, excuse me, Measure A. to shut me down speaking on Measure M, excuse me, Measure A. You are very inconsistent. I should have the same opportunity to speak on something that you're even donating our public funds towards. Okay? I would like my time back from Measure A because it benefits more.
Please go ahead and speak on this topic only.
I am, because you are separating what I can speak to, and here are the exact same things. This is outside the purview of the town business of Fairfax. This is outside the Ross Valley School District jurisdiction. I'm glad that there's conversation to help a nonprofit, but yet when I bring up something for the same thing, you shut me down improperly. The inconsistency there brings to the separation of our town and creates this division. I would like my time to try to educate people on Measure M. That actually affects more people that are being taxed equally across the entire district, but the funds being spent disproportionately benefit two schools and hurt the citizens of Fairfax.
I'm going to cut you off, Michael. You can talk to people outside about any political campaign.
But since this is your support.
I'm cutting you off. You need to stop.
No.
Michael, sit down now. Sit down now. Sit down. Next speaker.
If I may point out, this item is about how to spend Fairfax funds.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council members. Frank Edgar from the Cascades. I've been a longtime supporter of the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center, decades. So the property, Deer Park School Site, is zoned, open area, highly restrictive. I believe the $3 million value set on that property is way above a realistic number for the true value. So my question is, will this be a transfer of funds, government to government? Will Fairfax write a check for $25,000 to the Ross Valley School District? Is that how it's going to happen? I mean, they're the ones that, that need, that are going to get the money. So will it be a direct transfer of Fairfax funds to this?
We'll discuss that after. Go ahead and make your comments.
Well, I, I think it has to be clear how, how.
We'll discuss it after. If you have more comments, go ahead, please.
Okay. You know, $25,000 is, is, is to the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center a lot of money, and $25,000 is a lot of money to Fairfax taxpayers. So we need to know how it's going to, how it's going to happen. What's going to be the vehicle? You know, it would make sense to, for Fairfax to transfer funds from one governmental agency to another, Fairfax to Ross Valley School District. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Liz Ronnberger, Fairfax. Thanks a lot for doing this. I really, I'm, I'm so happy that, I'm enthusiastic about something the town council's doing. I'm really excited that you all are, are hopefully going to let this go through. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Liz. Next speaker, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. I was here 20-plus years ago, I believe it was, when there were, what, 150 people spoke on this issue, the first time there was some debate about what would happen with the site. You know, what we're looking at is another public-private partnership, and they don't work. You can look at Pacific Gas and Electric, doesn't work. So what you're talking about is $25,000 of public funds going to a private entity, and yet you're going to come back to the residents of Fairfax and say, well, we need somewhere between $11 million and $24 million for our roads because we didn't do anything on them for 10 years, but we're going to give away $25,000 to a private entity. You know, it's been brought up before about having an austerity budget to figure out what is prioritized, where are the monies that we have, where they go, and you just keep continuing to spend it on whatever. Yeah, I've had friends who've worked there. I've had, I know people who've gone there. I think it's, it's, it's done a great service, but it's a private enterprise. And if they've got $2 million already, then maybe if they have the documentation laid out that's acceptable to Ross Valley School District, they should go back. Because the people I've talked to on the board say that they don't want to foreclose on them, they don't want to evict them. They want to work with them, but they gave them nothing substantial, and they had their responsibility to the taxpayers of the Ross Valley who fund the school district.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
One question. How's your insurance going to go?
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Jim Cosgrove from Bay Road. I'm in support of the children's center, and thank you for the work that you're doing. Couple of questions that just came to mind, just on all the testing that's been done. I understand the money's being raised. When the building was built, in the testing?
You need to speak directly to the council.
In the testing, excuse me, in the testing, was there any encapsulated asbestos? And the reason I bring that up, you know, we talk about giving this $25,000 and $14 million for renovation, we start taking a look in encapsulated asbestos. I don't know if $14 million for mitigation is going to be able to do that. I mean, I deal with buildings sometimes where we do renovations and we go into older buildings, and it blows out the cost or we have to leave it alone. The other thing is, is we're giving $25,000, and as Mr. Ackman had pointed to, they can buy it back and potentially in 14 years. What does that language look like at the end of this contract? You know, we're going to give 25 grand, and I think it's a good gesture. If it's just children of Fairfax, are there also people in Woodacre? We spoke to Woodacre about potentially bringing some money and kicking in, our kids from Lagunitas? Can we speak to them also and up that ante for, you know, the community getting behind and sending a message? But back to the point, at the end of the agreement, you know, we're just be throwing money away at the end of 17 years, they can buy this out, and then all of a sudden you have these other issues I just mentioned, and it just goes back to them. And with the housing element that's going on, I'm sure there's going to be a lot more, a lot more kids in this area and low-income housing. So how's that bode with Ross potentially taking back the structure? So those are a couple of points that just, I thought, and I'd like to say thank you. And also, I think the tone of the crowd could be a little bit better, in my opinion. I know we're heated, but I think we still need to be respectful. We're neighbors here, and I think it's quite.
Thank you. Any other speakers in the room?
Madam Mayor, if, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
May we have a break before the Zoom comments?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, five minutes? Okay. Okay, folks, we're going to go to Zoom comments now. We're going to reconvene, but I want to make a statement before we go to Zoom comments, so hopefully folks on Zoom are listening. Okay, please stay within the subject matter jurisdiction, which is right now, dealing with the item on the potential donation for the Fairfax San Anselmo Children's Center acquisition. And also, do not disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. I'm giving you a warning now. I will cut you off. So I know there are folks on Zoom waiting that potentially will do what happened earlier. So we will start off with first public comment. The first speaker is Kay, followed by PJ Pfeffer. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi, town council. I agree with Liz. This is the best thing I have seen our town council do, that is best money spent I have in the last two years that I've watched every town council meeting, so I support this. There is no way our children are political and that this is for low-income childcare. It's the most diversity we have at Fairfax, so, thank you.
Thank you, Kay. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is PJ Pfeffer, followed by Julia. PJ, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, PJ Pfeffer, speaking solely on my own behalf. I was going to, at first, just speak about some of the public funds questions that were raised and some of the public comments that were posted with the agenda, but heard some things I also wanted to address. Hard to distill everything I went through in my review. I'm currently almost done with my letter to the RVSD Board, but it's still over 10 pages, 10-point font, single space, so I've got to edit it down more. The public funds issue, I, you know, it seems odd that it's being raised, given that this, you know, as Mr. Bragman noted, is totally reasonable and ordinary course. I thought it was interesting. I went back to look and see what other similar times that the town spends money for private benefit. You know, we don't hear the sort of complaint with the sidewalk repair program, which provides the reimbursement, which people should still use. I note that the town had a small business relief fund that was funded over 40 grand in light of COVID that was going directly town funds to small businesses, all considered public uses. I do think, you know, Mayor Kohler is right with respect to questioning the valuation. Just want to highlight that the valuation is from September of 2022. No one would, would purchase something based off of what one person said at that time. And Mr. Edgar noted plenty of reasons to doubt that the valuation in, in reality would be near as much as it can. Finally, to echo what Kay just said, I think this is an incredible use of public funds and one of the best ones I've seen the town do, supporting its residents by providing access to low-cost childcare is an important goal and one we should fund through our maximum ability.
Thank you, PJ. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Julia, followed by Kevin. Julia, you are unmuted.
Okay, we'll go on to the next speaker.
The next speaker is Kevin, followed by Rahim. Kevin, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council. Kevin Curtis. I follow the FSACC and support them in their mission to remain in Fairfax. And I'd like to thank the mayor for her efforts standing up at some of those meetings. But tonight, I'd like to talk about the expenditure and give it some, hopefully some support in use of the public funds. And so one of the things that's going on out there at the Deer Park Site is that there is no actual written public easement through the property to the MMWD lands. And I would ask that tonight, two and/or three or four of you, condition this money as to securing the public through fair across the property. And I understand from previous conversations that FSACC would be wholeheartedly in agreement with that. And so I would recommend that that's something that you put into tonight's statutory language. And then secondly, is just a little bit of a description. There are two actual parcels, the back parcel, which is the buildings, and then the front parcel, which is, has the public restrooms and little picnic area and roadway through fair. And I just recommend that you find a way to, with verbiage, to attach it to anything that happens with the back parcel, because that would be the primary parcel. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Rahim, followed by Jerome. Rahim, you're unmuted.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. My name is Rahim, and I'm a resident of Fairfax. So I do want to second what, what Kevin said about the easement. That is one concern I had. And then also, did you guys get my postcards about how Jews suck baby dick? Because it's true.
And next speaker. The next speaker is Jerome, followed by Matthew. Jerome, you're unmuted.
Fuck you, niggers!
The next speaker is Matthew, followed by Michael. Matthew, you are unmuted.
Let's move on to the next speaker.
The next speaker is Michael, followed by Lisa. Michael, you are unmuted.
Is this public comment on the agenda?
It's only on the, the potential donation to this children's center.
I wanted to talk about the tunnels under the synagogues.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Lisa, followed by June. Lisa, you are unmuted.
Want to talk about a couple of issues that have been raised. One is about the critical benefits of the center. There are some unique benefits to Fairfax. If the center were to be evicted, the property would be vacant. It would be an incredible liability, both for the school district, for the neighbors, and helping with the acquisition or helping with the renovations is of serious benefit to neighbors. The property will be unsafe, either that or it will be completely boarded up and will not look anything like it does today. Another point is that the appraisal that was done, in the appraisal, it indicates it did not account for the value of the reversionary clause, ADA upgrades, or hazardous materials, so that it is clear that the $3 million is a high appraisal. I would really encourage the council, in addition to doing this really remarkably generous and visionary contribution, to host a public workshop to address some of the legal and safety concerns that have been raised by the district, because there's a lot of different opinions, both legal and safety, that the community really has not had an opportunity to hear from safety experts and from other, either land use attorneys or attorneys with opinions about liability, where questions could be asked and issues addressed and resolved. But I really want to thank you for everything that you're doing and considering to maintain this absolutely remarkable resource in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Matthew, followed by June. Matthew, you're unmuted.
Yeah, let's go on to the next speaker.
The next speaker is June, followed by Kai. June, you're unmuted.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
I want to ask why this mayor thinks that she could shut down people's free speech. Do you believe you are totalitarian, authoritarian?
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kai, followed by Julia. Kai, you're unmuted.
Hi, good evening, council. I don't know how I'm going to top all those other callers. It's been a wild night. But I, I think I have a better way to spend that money. We could rebuild all the concentration camps and put all the kikes back in.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Julia, followed by Mitzi. Julia, you're unmuted.
Hi, I'm Julia. I'm an FSACC parent, and I'm also the president of the Board of Directors at group in Fairfax, and I went to the children's center myself. So I know firsthand what an incredibly valuable program this is. It's a cornerstone of the community, and it's been providing services for 50 years. So I really want to thank the council for considering this proposal. I think it's so important that we do everything we can to keep this program going, especially here in Fairfax. And without this program, many of the few, you know, low-income families living and working here will not be able to stay. I also want to address some of the safety concerns that were raised earlier. I want to point out that we've had over 15 professionals, including architects, engineers, the town of Fairfax Building Department, the Ross Valley Fire Department, and state childcare licensing all inspect the property, and not one of them have said the property is unsafe. is unsafe or that children should be removed from the property. So of course, if we purchase it, we have a plan to upgrade it and to ensure continued and future safety, including seismic and fire safety upgrades. But it's been made clear to us that all those upgrades are voluntary. I also want to address the issue of fire insurance. We've secured fire insurance. I want to talk about the choice to hire Stephanie Helmet as a consultant. We did consider that.
Let's keep that aside. Let's not discuss that. That's potentially problematic, since she is a council member, even though she's recused.
Okay, no, that's fine. I want to offer myself up as available to answer any other questions that might come up as well. But I have lots of things to say, but all positive. Thank you very, very much for considering this. I definitely am in favor of this. I think it's a great use of public money, and I think that we should do everything we can to keep the children's center here and going. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Julia. Before we go on to the next speaker, I think our town attorney wanted to say something.
I think you should reiterate the warning that you're giving and explaining what you're doing.
Okay, so for folks that are online and folks in the room, please state of the subject matter jurisdiction, which in this case is a potential donation of $25,000 for the acquisition of the Fairfax San and Salmo Children's Center from Ross Valley School District. Also, do not disrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting. I'm giving you a warning now. I will cut you off. Thank you. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Mitzi, followed by Sparky. Mitzi, you're unmuted.
Hi, my name is Mitzi Pippe. I just want to say I really appreciate that warning. I also want to say nigger, nigger, wipe, how.
Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Sparky, followed by Samuel. Sparky, you are unmuted.
Hi, I'm unmuted.
Yes.
Fantastic! So I wanted to address the safety concerns that was brought up earlier this evening. But before I get to that, I'd like to also address the councilwoman, who, remember, who recused herself for being so involved with all the kikes that are running the children's hospital.
The next speaker is Samuel, followed by Ray. Samuel, you're unmuted. Let's move on to the next speaker. The last speaker is Ray. Ray, you are unmuted.
Yeah, I'm just wondering when we're going to gas all these Jews, nigger.
There are no more speakers on Zoom. So again, I want to apologize to anyone who's on Zoom or anyone in the room. This is an organized group of folks who are trying to terrorize people, so we will do our best to keep things moving. Just a couple of questions that were raised. The idea is, this is all conditioned on the possibility of the Fairfax San and Salmo Children's Center being able to purchase the property from the Ross Valley School District. So no money would change hands until such an agreement were in place to purchase it. In the event, and it would have to remain for use as a childcare center, it could not be flipped to another use. And our attorney has asked that, in the event that all those things come into play, that she would fashion an agreement between the town and the children's center, which would have those conditions placed upon it, and we would transfer the money directly to the school, to the children's center. It would not go through the school district. The money would go through the children's center. Anything you would like to add to that, Town Attorney Coulson?
No, I think at the time, if this passes, at the time, we would like to revisit an agreement, the type of agreement, and how we would transfer and the conditions attached to it.
Okay. And I do have one question, because I believe I made a mistake in the acronym. And Heidi, could you come up to the mic, please? Is the acronym F-S-S-A-C-C?
F-S-A-C-C.
F-S?
A-C-C.
Wait a minute.
F?
S? A-C-C. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you for.
And a quick comment, since I'm up here. We have been working with our insurance broker, and she's assured us that we can get fire insurance. And there is the California Fair Plan that we can absolutely get insurance, so there's no question about that. And hazardous materials like asbestos is part of what's been called out, and that has already been considered in our renovation plan.
Thank you. Thank you, Heidi. And I apologize for the wrong acronym. Should we move forward with this? We'll change that in the resolution to make that correct. And were there any other questions that, or I don't believe there are any other questions we need to respond to that were heard during public comment, but were there any deliberative comments that folks wanted to make at this time, or did you have further questions? Councilmember Ackerman?
Yeah, I really appreciate the public comments, not the Zoom bombing, but the real public comments. And there were a few that I thought were, raised some questions. One of them was the question of how exactly the funds might transfer. You were just discussing with our town council that there could be a written agreement that would go along with that, that would probably address, among other things, the stipulation that we're assuming no liability going forward, that sort of thing. I would imagine that a way to transfer funds like that would be during the actual sale process, we would put our money into the escrow fund, when the escrow fund is established, something like that. So it wouldn't be handing money over to the FSACC at this point. It would be something much more structured than that. So I'm seeing nods indicating that that all makes sense. The, there was a comment that it would be good if other communities were to chip in some money, and I guess I would, speaking for Mayor Kohler, who brought this forward, I would think that this is one of the reasons that we would, in Fairfax, that we would take this action tonight, is to put that forth as an example.
Well, I think one piece to remember is the county has already allocated $500,000 towards the acquisition, and that's where folks were talking about Woodacre and others. That's unincorporated, county.
Yeah, no, those are unincorporated, so they would be covered under that. Anyway, that's, that's just a thought that, okay, we should pick it up. And then, the two parcels and the access, I never thought about the two parcels.
I don't think, I don't think those are things that we need to, I think Eric has his hand up, but we're basically looking at assisting with the acquisition. Any sort of agreement that the children's center would enter into with the Ross Valley School District would include, and they have legal expertise, all those other sort of issues regarding access and things like that. Eric, did you need to step up to the mic to add something? And you need to click the button?
There's always been an easement through the property.
You need to speak a little closer.
I believe there's always been an easement through the property. I don't see that would ever change.
Yeah, and, okay, so, but it's not our responsibility to cover the details of a potential sale. We want to make sure that the town wouldn't be liable and those kinds of things. And I believe in the staff report, I mentioned the agreement that we would have.
The only other thing I was going to say is, along, like you said, the county is also putting money, and I believe also that discussions are starting to happen with San and Salmo Town Council also. 75% of our families live in this community, between Fairfax and San and Salmo. So it seems reasonable, and historically, I think the majority of our families have always been right here, local. So it makes sense to me that the local towns would, you know, if they were going to support, that's what, you know, would make sense.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, so let's move on to potential motion or deliberative comments. Councilmember Cutrone.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to respond to a couple of things from the, I mean, we received, you know, plenty of emails about this. I know this has been on people's minds for years now. But, you know, to the commenters that questioned the use of public funds associated with this, I mean, I feel like the public benefit of giving this amount of money, I mean, frankly, it's not, it's not even as much as we may want to consider in the future in terms of trying to move, if we need to move this across the finish line. But it is so apparent to me that the public benefit of having a childcare center remain in Fairfax, remain in the Ross Valley, and, you know, I feel like we always preach that we want to work with jurisdictions across the region collaboratively to make our community's dreams come true. And I feel like this, you know, Mayor Kohler, you bringing this forward, other council members doing everything they can to support the children's center. I feel like it's all to that end of just trying to work collaboratively to solve a really complex problem. And this is, again, a small contribution, but it's a token of, you know, our willingness to contribute to this process and to make this possible. And it seems clear to me that, you know, there are a lot of other contributors putting time and resources to make this happen. So I'm really hopeful that this all works out, and I would be happy to make a motion.
Great. I think we have one more deliberative comment, and then I will look to you for the motion.
Okay. So I do want to note that I think that we need to change that F-X-S-A-C-C to F-S-A-C-C.
Yeah, I mentioned we would do that.
Okay. And the other one is just that, you know, the recommendation says Fairfax and Salmo, it needs to say Fairfax San and Salmo Children's Center. And I'm happy to hear that other communities are thinking of pitching in, and that conversation has started, because I understand that a lot of the children are from here, but they're also, you know, in surrounding communities, and it is a broad benefit. And I do think that the children's center is as vital and central to this community as the wall property. They both seem to be extremely central and well-beloved institutions that have been, you know, sort of a dream for the community for a very long time. Contributing to the children's center also, you know, addresses some towns' goals about allowing people, you know, who are working families, to continue to exist here in Fairfax and/or work here in Fairfax. And it also does address some of our goals around diversity in the town. So I do like those. I did want to say that, you know, I understand that this has been a difficult process for a number of people and a number of institutions, and I do feel like, I know that the Ross Valley School District was also faced with what looked like an intractable problem, and that it was difficult for the folks working on it from that side as well. And so, my overall statement is just that I want to see this children's center remain here for all of these reasons, and my willingness to vote for this is not intended as a slight to the school district either. I understand this has been difficult for them, but I do see this as an extremely valuable gem in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Blash. With that, I would look, and when you make the motion, you can say that we need to correct the resolution with the correct acronyms and nomenclature.
Great. And just a quick question to the town attorney. There's, you know, approval and two authorizations in the recommendation. Do you want those taken separately, or do you, does that matter? Okay, great. Well, then I'd be happy to make a motion to approve a donation of $25,000 to the Fairfax San and Salmo Children's Center solely for the purpose of purchasing the property at 199 Portius Avenue in Fairfax from the Ross Valley School District, so they may continue to operate the Fairfax San and Salmo Children's Center at this location and adopt a resolution making findings as appropriate, and to authorize the town attorney to enter into an agreement with the Fairfax San and Salmo Children's Center.
Town manager.
Nope, sorry. Town manager to enter into an agreement with the Fairfax San and Salmo Children's Center to transfer the funds if and when an agreement is entered into between Ross Valley School District and the center, so that Fairfax San and Salmo Children's Center may complete the purchase, and to authorize Mayor Kohler to send a letter to the Ross Valley School District transmitting the resolution if approved.
As approved.
As approved, and with the amendments to the resolution identified by Vice Mayor Blash, specifically the uniform acronym for the children's center.
I would second that.
Okay, and may we have a roll call vote? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash? Yes. Mayor Kohler?
Yes. And I want to thank everyone for your comments, and thank Heidi and Eric for being here, and your board chair, and Larry Bragman, board member, for being here. And also, to make it clear, I want to thank Vice Mayor Blash for saying this is not intended as any sort of negative implication on the part of the Ross Valley School District Board. We want this to move forward so the children can continue to prosper at the children's center. So thank you all. And with that, I'm sorry, but I need to take a five-minute break, and then we will reconvene at 8:30 on item two. Okay, everyone. So we're moving on to item two, which is adopt a resolution to rescind resolution number 09.24-24 and approve the updated townwide's record retention schedule as presented. And I want to remind folks that we have a supplement to the records retention policy. There was a couple of things that were left out inadvertently, and it's also, they're posted online as well as on the safe back in the hallway. So with that, I don't, Christine, oh, Madam Clerk, are you doing the town report, the staff report?
Yes, Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you.
Of course. Tonight, you're considering the adoption of a revised records retention schedule to replace the existing schedule, which was last updated and adopted in 2009. Records retention schedules define the period of time that records should be retained and when they should be destroyed. An updated schedule is essential to ensure legal compliance, operational efficiency, organization, and to mitigate risk associated with outdated practices. The proposed schedule for consideration tonight reflects changes in legal requirements to revise the duration. Various types of records should be retained, new record types, such as solid waste recycling and body worn camera footage, to name a couple, and incorporate strategies for digital records management. We worked with Diane Gladwell from Gladwell Government Services to assist with this comprehensive reevaluation of our records to ensure we were compliant with retention best practices and changes in retention law. I might also note that each department participated in the evaluation of their records and were a part of this process. So if there are any questions anyone has, I'd be happy to answer them.
And I believe you mentioned that when Michelle Gardner was also working, you both worked with Diane Gladwell on the records retention policy. Is that correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
Thank you. So any questions for our clerk on the records retention policy? Seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and open public comment on this item, but before I do, I'm going to, again, give folks a caution. We need to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction, which at this point is the records retention policy that we have before us with the supplement. We also need to have orderly conduct, and I will cut anybody off, either in the room or on Zoom, who does not stay within those boundaries. So with that, let's open public comment. Anyone in the room have comments on the record retention policy?
Hi, Todd Greenberg. The cart's before the horse here a little bit. It's essential that there be a records retention policy, but as I understand it, from multiple sources in this town, the records haven't even been fully digitized yet. Have any of you actually requested various records, or talked to people who come in and request records? Have any of you actually requested various records or talked to people who come in and request records? Or heard from people who make PRAs asking for what are supposed to be publicly available documents? And they don't get them four or five times until they have to think about issuing a writ of mandamus? It's not running right here. The records haven't been kept right here for a long time. And adopting a wholesale new records retention policy seems like a dodge. It seems like, hey, we're throwing things out. We're not going to be responsible. Now, the city of Sausalito has a records digitization project. That's what should happen here first. They're digitizing over 100 years of records there. You need to do an inventory here first. The city of Imperial Beach has done a full digitization and they have a very responsive department when you do a PRA or you need records. It's available. It's not available here in Fairfax. That's very wrong and it sets you up for liability. Let me read about best practices. Effective records management. This is from Local Government Records Management Guidelines from the state of California. Effective records management ensures that records are kept only as long as they have some administrative, fiscal or legal value. When records are no longer fulfill the value for which they were created, they should be destroyed unless they have some historic or research significance. Now Frank Eggers pointed out that you don't or don't want to produce records that should be there. Adopting these policies wholesale is wrong.
Thank you.
One more thing for best practices.
Thank you. No. Next, sorry. Next speaker, please.
Well, good evening, council. So I see that on these updated townwide retention, records retention schedule, I think it was on page forty eight, that there was minutes for open space committee, minutes for town council. I didn't see anything for the planning commission.
That's in the supplement.
Okay, I looked, I just looked. I didn't see it, but
The, the whole planning commission was left out. Planning Commission, Planning Department was all left out.
Okay. So I've seen as the minutes have a permanent status. But I saw that the video and audio is only 10 years. And I think, you know, that the minutes, they can never fully capture, you know, the entire narrative of the meeting. And I think the video and audio provides really important context, you know, to those meetings. And I would like to see, excuse me, a permanent retrievable historical record of the videos and audios for planning commission and town council as well.
Thank you.
And
Oh, I'm sorry.
Those were just recommendations that, that service provided, right? The consulting service.
They're based on their expertise on records retention.
I just think it's really important to be able to go back and look at videos of previous planning commissions and town council meetings and understand what happened, you know, 10 years ago, 20 years ago, and people in the future. It's a digital age. It's easy to store online. I think I would really like to see permanent retrieval of the video and audio as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Liz Fronberger. Um, I'd like to just echo the comment about keeping more than just the minutes. As you know, minutes can be overly brief, are incredibly subjective. And when I have, in my past, in one of my past lives, I was a, a legal secretary and had occasion to really dig into some pretty big issues for a large law firm that I worked for. And I found sometimes the minutes were so brief and, and felt almost intentionally negligent in what they were capturing. And I, and while that might protect the entity that's producing the minutes, and I'm not saying that's what's happening here. But I do think that now that we have the option of video and recreations, I would, I would recommend that you keep those because I think they can have greater significance down the line than you might realize, particularly as we move into younger council people and new people moving into Fairfax. I just think minutes might be just not enough. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, town council. I very much support keeping all of these records. The cost of terabyte storage is cheap. The organization takes a little bit of time. But if the real push here is to try to avoid liabilities when you've changed mine, and I don't mean in a negative way or changed policy, that could also be used against you. If somebody had retained something out of context, bring it up and then question you at the present. You wouldn't even have the means to disqualify where that was out of context. As somebody, my, my job for the securities litigation class action lawsuits would dig into the past and find these wrongs, find the insurance, find what we can do to improve things. If you're selectively only saving some things, it hurts everybody. It's to your benefit. Like for instance, when I asked the town on a PRA, and I don't believe you know, if there were any MOUs in the community and/or the county around you, and Fairfax said no. If you'd taken the time and even contacted San Salmo, let's digitize some of these records. You could see the MOU between these two towns. It's never been vacated. So again, moving forward, and I do not support deference to any company. I really support that you guys say, hey, this is a very inexpensive way to retain our information. And that way you have access to, you can go back, but once it's gone, it won't help you in liability. Trust me, because somebody can pull something out of context and then you're still fighting that issue and you will have no way to defend yourself. Please keep all the information because especially on the minutes, there is summary. They don't properly reflect all the information that's shared. And that's what we're here to do to save it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Frank Egger Cascades. It's clear to everyone in town that the Fairfax Town Council and, and your town attorney ignore the history of Fairfax, the litigations, the referendums, any initiatives. They were an integral function of keeping Fairfax a small town and protecting our open space. 615 Oak Manor Drive, the Meadowland Open Space, Upland Residential Zoning are all examples of, of Fairfax going sideways on, on the history. I urge you to keep all records of town litigations and land use decisions. Please keep these records intact. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Uh, next speaker, please.
Hi, Kristy Goman, Fairfax. With our technology and digital age, I would also like to recommend that in lieu of minutes, that we do voice to text with actual recording so that we don't miss. There's no subjectivity in the way in which minutes are taken. It's a lot of manpower, person power to generate minutes when we can use technology for voice to text and therefore not have any missing spots. And, you know, I think we are so fortunate to have an amazing historian. And I hate to see that any of the history of this town is lost. And I think we owe it to our future to maintain those, the nuances that's made this town be what it is. And the fact that we've got records stored in a safe, that's a little scary. We got a, we got a river that runs under the, the town hall. So I, I just, I can't support enough of the digitizing and preserving our history. Thank you.
Thank you. Other speakers in the room? Seeing none, how many hands raised do we have?
We have five raised hands on Zoom.
Okay, before we start taking speakers, I want to mention that folks have to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction, which at this point, let me make this comment first, which is with the, the records retention policy and also to stay within the orderly conduct of the council. I will cut you off, either people in the room or people on Zoom. So I guess we have one more speaker in the room. Could you, in the future, try to get up here quickly? Go ahead. And you need to press the button.
Renou Malhotra from Deer Park area. Someone just mentioned that the safe. I know, for example, that in the town there are old newspapers that go back maybe 100 years. So how do you digitize all of that and keep that? Just wanted to, you know, is that part of the town records that would be covered under this, these considerations? Just raising that as a topic. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, before we go to Zoom again, I'm going to repeat the warning. And that is that people need to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction, which at this point is talking about the records retention policy and also stay within the orderly conduct of, of the business of a meeting. I will cut people off. There will be no further warnings. This is your warning now. Thank you.
The first speaker is Mallory, followed by Mike. Mallory, you're unmuted now.
All right. Well, I am, as everyone else is, in favor of retaining the history of the town. And I'm also in favor of you guys listening to us and not making your own decision after we give you feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Mike, followed by Gabe. Mike, you're unmuted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Not really. You're garbled.
All right, well, I can talk to you. Uh, I'm going to follow what the junior said that we're talking in person about how you need to retain your records.
Sorry, I can't hear you. I'm cutting you off. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Gabe, followed by William. Gabe, you're unmuted.
Before the lady who looks like she took a fistful of Xanax and smells like cat piss.
The next speaker is William, followed by Sigmond. William, you're unmuted.
All right. Good evening. Um, as far as the record keeping goes, are we keeping track of how many Jews are sucking baby dick?
Next speaker, please.
Sigmond, you're unmuted now.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I'm, I'm for the records retention, you know, because if we don't keep records, you get Jews trying to
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Thank you. Again, I want to apologize to everyone who had to hear that. And we'll do our best to keep on track. So bringing it back to the council, would someone like to make deliberative comments or pose any changes?
Well, I have, I, I wanted to give staff the opportunity to respond on some of the digitation, digitization inquiries. I'm, I'm guessing you explored that or you have some sense of costs related to that. And I would like to understand, obviously, these meetings are recorded. They can be found on YouTube. Can you just explain, is there a cost associated with that? Like, is the whole YouTube thing, do we pay for that? And be helpful.
I, I can answer that. Um, we, we can and we do store the videos of town council and boards and commission meetings on YouTube. This retention period is a guideline for us to follow. And it was actually, the retention period for the audio and video files was 10 years in 2009. So that's remaining unchanged. And that's, um, that's a guideline. We don't have to destroy any records once they exceed their life. It's, this is, this is a roadmap for us to follow to do our best record keeping under best practices.
So just to, I guess, should we ask to keep the video and audio tapes? And I don't know that there are that many audio tapes anymore, but mostly the videotapes. Keep those as permanent records along with our minutes. That would be a change that we could make in the records retention policy for particularly, I think, all the boards and commissions as well as the town council. And I do know one thing, sitting on another commission, that we are looking into digitizing records and it's quite expensive and quite lengthy process. It's not required and I think ultimately we should move in that direction, but it's quite expensive. Town manager, could you speak to that?
Before you do though, is, do we know the cost of, let's say, we decide, you know, whether it's all commissions or planning commission and town council, what the cost would be if we said in perpetuity, like no, no date?
There is no cost associated with running the YouTube channel, which is where our video files are stored. We record them into the cloud through Zoom and then they're uploaded to YouTube. And just for the record, the only meetings that are recorded on video are the planning commission and the town council meetings. The boards and commissions retention period is actually two years for any of the files out there.
If we, if we wanted to keep the videos on YouTube in perpetuity, there would be no fiscal impact.
None at this time.
Okay. And if I can just also add to that, it's, it's fine to keep those records on YouTube. But what we don't want to do is become responsible for, say, updating to the next, whatever the next iteration is forever and ever. That may be very expensive and difficult. Well, at some point YouTube will become obsolete and we won't, uh, it would be very expensive to then migrate to the, whatever the next system may be. And we've gotten advice from Gladwell that we should be focusing first on digitizing the things that are coming in now rather than trying, that's the first thing to do before you try to go back in time. Did that answer your question?
I think the town attorney has her hand up.
Some things are, the statute, California state law requires retention of certain things. And so one of the things the records retention schedule does is highlight those items that have a statutoily required retention period. For example, minutes are permanent. And that's just a factor of how long that, how old that law is, right? And so, but it is, we are required to keep minutes permanently.
Sorry, Councilmember Cutrone, I didn't see that finger being
Just, yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, yeah, so a couple of quick questions. And one, I just want to plus one, what Councilmember Hellman is bringing up about the YouTube postings. I mean, that's where I watch all my planning commission meetings. And I think it's super valuable to have a channel there where everything is captured in one place and you don't have to go seek, seek it out on the website in some obscure space. But I, I think to your comment, Tom Andrew Abrams, about the obsolescence of something like YouTube in the future, I think that's for a future council to decide, like if there's, if that's going away, if years and years of videos are stored there and there's a cost for migration or something like that. I mean, what, what we're talking about here is not keeping the source files in some, you know, flash drive or, or, you know, something, external hard drive. But if we put them there and make sure that they're just staying there, there's no cost. And then in the future, if there's a reason, if, if they're at threat or at risk of being deleted, I guess that a future council can make that decision. And I hope they'd make the decision to, to pay to keep the videos because I agree with the public. The, the videos are, that's, those are juicy, you know? I mean, the actions are in the minutes, but like all the flavor is really in the, the actual meeting video and audio. I had one of, one question about digitization, which is, I, I agree. I mean, I know it's expensive, uh, just being, wearing that hat at work, managing the process for records retention for stuff. But the question I have, digitizing all stuff coming in and coding that, for the stuff, for the older hard copies of documents, things in the safe, things that we have. Someone mentioned newspapers, you know, in, in these, in this new proposed record retention schedule, there are things like, you know, repairs for town vehicles. How long do you keep the documentation about a repair for a town vehicle or things like that? Like, you know, for a town vehicle, or things like that? Like, you know, maybe not as useful to keep in perpetuity. I'm curious if we have a plan for how we manage that process, looking backwards, you know, whenever we do decide to digitize old documents, like, as we clear storage, or as we clear the hard copies of things, are we going to be looking through things and being like, oh, this needs to be kept, or this doesn't need to be, like, is that, is that the plan? Because I think that's probably the concern from the public, is we have this for everything moving forward, but does that mean that somebody's going to take, you know, one of those, you know, cardboard boxes and just dump all of the old records, because, you know, no one has time to look through and digitize what's important or what's not important, you know?
Yeah, I appreciate the, the question, and I'll, I'll turn it over to Christine in just a minute, but it's staff's responsibility to make sure that the records that are being kept are being kept appropriately, and we do that, if anything, I think, you know, right now, if you were to come into the town offices, you would see that we keep a lot more than we should or could, and it's, it's an issue in terms of just space and being able to work efficiently. So that's why Christine mentioned that all of the departments have been involved in evaluating each of their department's retention schedule, is how long do you need this type of record? And how are you going to be able to retrieve that and either keep it or destroy it when it's time? Want to follow up from there?
Sure, thank you. I would just piggyback off of that. We have absolutely no intention of hauling bankers' boxes full of documents out to the recycling bin and getting rid of anything. This retention schedule update really needed to happen to set us up successfully in being able to audit the records that are in town hall, because the schedule from 2009 is just so outdated. So this will be a huge push for us to be able to follow guidelines that are updated, that follow best practices, that will help us move into digitizing all of these records. And we have had very, very, very preliminary conversations about the steps that we will need to take to digitize our records, and that conversation will continue evolving, and we will likely come back to council to discuss that.
Okay, well, I'm about ready to make a motion unless other people have-
I just want to make a comment. Having worked on many records retention policies in state government, it's really important that we keep on top of the records, and we also, you know, make sure that we're not keeping extra stuff. And even though I didn't love doing it, I read every page. And I think there was some really good information in here. I would also say that I just want to add, I think keeping the videos of the planning commission and the town council permanent for now, if, if something changes and YouTube goes away, and there's something that charges you $100,000 a year, then I think, as Councilmember Cutrano said, a subsequent council could consider that. Is, is that something we need to do? And, and also, these videos may not last forever, but I would like to see that one change for the planning commission as well as the town council that we retain, it's really the videos, it's not audio recordings, because the videos include those. And so if you want to go ahead and make the motion, remember, we have a supplement, but if you, if the rest of the council agrees with that approach-
Yeah, I was going to make that suggestion as well.
Okay, so if-
I can make-
Why don't we let Vice Mayor Blash make the motion?
With regard to the storing of the videos, though, it, it sounds like that's de facto what's happening now. The videos are stored on YouTube, and as I understand it, YouTube, you can't even delete anything from YouTube. It's there. And so as long as YouTube continues to exist and continues to maintain the existing policy that they have, which is that they just keep it all, and just keep buying more hard disks, that's there essentially stored in.
Well, I, I think, though, I would disagree with you that it's one thing for YouTube to have a policy. I think it's important for the council to have a policy that we want to retain those permanently. And just because there is a company that allows it right now, that doesn't mean that it will continue that way. So I think it's important for us to make-
I'm not sure I agree with that, but-
Okay.
That's, uh-
Go ahead.
I might also note that when we go through a, once a record or records see the end of their lifecycle, we will bring that back to council for approval before the records are destructed, so you might keep that in mind as well.
Sorry, now I have another question about YouTube. Sorry.
Go ahead.
So there's no contractual, by having a channel, is there any contractual relationship with YouTube? Like, do they, they have the right to destroy or take down without notifying us at this point in time? Do we know?
I actually don't know if I could answer that confidently.
But we don't have a contract?
No, we don't have a contract with YouTube, and we have an account, we have a channel, we have a profile.
There's probably terms and conditions when you set up an account.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any guarantee that that's, that's not a storage space that is a guaranteed storage space necessarily.
I don't know if we want Google or YouTube to be the storehouse for the town's videos as like the, the failsafe, right? I mean, they're permanent might require some sort of backup. You, you get it from the cloud and you download it and then upload it to-
Right, so they're not all, they're not only stored on the YouTube platform, they're stored in our Zoom cloud account, which we do pay for.
Yeah.
So those are ours, we own them, and if we ever left Zoom, we would get all of our recordings.
Okay. Well, that's helpful.
We might want to think about, I mean, to someone's comment, the cost of hard storage of these things is not that expensive these days, and we might want to consider for videos in particular, like having them stored in some digital way that's not on, on the cloud. But I know that everybody's switching things to the cloud, so I, I get that, but something to think about.
Well, why don't we let staff explore that later, but I think the decision is, do we want to keep the videos permanent for now, and we can let staff explore the ins and outs of how that would happen, rather than trying to figure it out here?
So it might understand that it's your desire to look into keeping the videos permanently.
I think my desire right now is to include that in the records retention policy as keeping the videos permanent for the planning commission and the town council. And we would let staff look at the logistics of how that would work, rather than us trying to work it out at the dais.
Well, I understand that, but I, perhaps we could bring that back and add it on.
Okay.
Because we don't know how much that's going to cost.
Okay, well, let's, let's, for now, leave that off. And so Vice Mayor Blash, would you like to make a motion?
Uh, yes. And I'm also just going to say that I am married to an archivist, and digitization is extremely costly and time consuming to do it right. Uh, it's not as simple as just throwing some stuff in the scanner. Okay, so, um, let me pull up. Of course, now my computer's shut off. I move that we adopt a resolution to rescind Resolution Number 09-24 and approve the updated townwide records retention schedule as presented, including the supplements presented tonight.
Would somebody like to-
Second that.
Okay, so that was Vice Mayor Blash, and second from Councilmember Cutrano. Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for your work on this, Christine.
Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Moving on, we are now at Item 3, which is adopt a resolution authorizing the display of Chamber of Commerce banners on downtown light posts, authorize use of staff time to place banners, authorize the town manager to pay for printing of authorized banners. And I'd also like to point out that we also have a supplement, which includes a change to the res, some changes to the resolution, as well as there were some glitches with the printing of the sign regulation fact sheet, and they are posted online as well as being back on the save. So with that, Town Manager Abrams, thank you for bringing this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. I'm going to ask Christine to bring up the short PowerPoint, and I will warn you in advance that actually, I've heard from the chamber today that they have a, a different timeline for posting those banners than we-
Yeah, I believe I saw March 19th as the start date.
Um, March 19th through April 1, so a little shorter than we were anticipating.
So March 19th only through April 1?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, okay.
Um, they, the, they would like to have consistency between the signs that they'll create and the signs that we, the-
So we're basically doing it for 11 days? I mean, we'll talk about that. Okay, you're not on the mic?
You're, you're referring to March 19th through April 1st as just the time during which they would be hung, right? Not the total time they-
No, I, I recognize it's, it's a very short window. That's the request that I got from them today. I, I think that Stacy, who is the designer, may be on the line.
Well, let's, let's go through the presentation, but I think it's a problem for us to spend more than $5,000 to have something hung for 11 days. Yeah, I, I think that's extremely problematic, so let's go ahead.
Um, so here you see the banners that were proposed. Keep in mind that in Fairfax, we went, went to, sorry, uh, keep in mind, in Fairfax, we have banner mounts on just one side, so there would be one banner per light post, up to 18 banners. I'm going to the next slide.
So there's nine light posts where the banners would be placed, or?
No, uh, there would be like three light posts across the street from three light posts, three different installations, if you can imagine that, six different-
Maybe you can go back and start over, because this is confusing. And I know what I brought, but it seems very confusing. So could you go back to the start?
So this, I'm just pointing out that this picture shows two banners on one post. But in fact, in Fairfax, we just have the equipment to hold one banner on each post.
Oh, okay.
And there's a total of 18 banners.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Sure. Uh, next slide. So Mayor, Town Manager, and Chamber have been meeting once a month for a couple of years now, and, well, a, a year plus now. And the Chamber suggested this, and Mayor Kohler brought it forward. This is important because the town, and I'll just go to the next slide here. Nope. Go one more, and then we'll go back. The town does have a flag policy, which we have used also for banners. And we've used that for the rainbow flags in June, and we've used that for the veterans' flag. So it's important for the town to be able to maintain authority over those banners so that they don't become just, you know, commercial, or, as you, you know, saw today, some type of other hate bombing. So then there are also other signs that the Chamber is wanting to do, and they will do those on their own. They are covered by the sign ordinance, and so I just want to point that out. And we did attach a fact sheet about the sign ordinance. I'm sorry about the formatting issues in the first version, but the second version in the, in the supplement just doesn't have the formatting issues. So I just want to point that out. And then I'm going to go back one. So what the Chamber has requested is really just these banners to promote their, you know, their membership. That's something that the town is finds of interest to the public, because there's a real value towards a lively downtown, and also we do receive sales tax as a result of those businesses being active. So we want to promote those, and then that requested timeframe is there, and it's pretty short. We can talk to them about that, and perhaps we can revise the resolution just to allow the maximum amount of time and work with them a little bit further. They have changed their mind a few times. I am. Thank you.
Okay, so Councilmember Hellman.
Do we have a, I've, I've been involved in some other banners, so, but is there like, does Susan Waters keep a calendar? Is there some, was there any reason for this timeframe and why it got shortened? Is there something coming up in April, or?
So Susan Water does, you're right, keep a calendar for the banner, the large banner that can be put over Sir Francis Drake. And that has been used by a number of different nonprofits. That's not, they want to align the timing with that, but that's not these banners that go on light posts. Those have not been commercially available. You, we've never allowed people to just pay to erect whatever sign they want there. And so I think it will be important for the town to be able to maintain that those are for town speech.
Okay, but there's nothing planned for April for other, other banners of this type, not the Sir Francis Drake one?
No, the, the thing that's coming up is in June, we would put the, the Pride banners back-
Yeah, and then we have the Fairfax Festival ones.
Yeah, but, but for right now, the first thing that's coming up are the Pride banners.
Right.
So originally, I think the Chamber's a little, you know, they're trying to find their way.
Yeah.
But, uh-
I mean, I, I have concern about the, just the time. It, it's a lot of work for public works to get these up.
I think it's also, I mean-
So 11 days is not-
No, I mean, well, I'm sorry for interrupting, but I brought this item, and, and I'm really concerned. We're not going to do something for 11 days. That's ridiculous for us to spend money to print these and then have public work spend their time putting them up, taking them down. In the past, we've had, several years ago, we had banners that the Chamber designed for the light posts that stayed up for way too long, and they looked pretty crummy after a while. But the Chamber is planning a whole PR campaign about, you know, we love Fairfax. They, they have a lot of things that they want to do that are not something that we're supporting necessarily. Let them do what they need to do. And I think there may be some thoughts that they want to focus on that 11-day period. But my feeling is this, is that this is something that we wanted to control to support them. And I think Eat, Play, Shop is something that if we're going to do this, and that's why we have the supplement, it would go through May 30. We could start on March 19 to accommodate them. Originally, it was going to be on or about March 1, and we were going to pay for a rush job on these. This would probably work better for our timeframe. Start on March 19, leave them up through May 30, which allows the Public Works crews to take them down and put the Pride banners up. And to me, I'm not supportive of something that would be an 11-day project. And I think when I look at it from the town's perspective and what you wrote in the resolution, this helps our town. You know, sales tax brings in certain money to the town. This is an attractive thing for our town. We could certainly continue it longer than the 11-day period, and I think we should- And I think we should make it work for our Public Works crews. If they're taking one down, they can put the other one up. But I guess I saw this email really late, and I was frankly not reading it correctly, but I'm shocked. So with that, why don't I ask other council members to ask questions?
Yeah, is there, did somebody say somebody from the Chambers on the line that could answer why they want that short of a time period, or would they accept a longer time period? I mean, is.
I was hoping the designer, Stacy.
Well, what about somebody from actually the Chamber, like Mina or David Smadback? Are they on the line?
No, Mayor.
Okay, is Stacy Meserschmidt on the line?
No, Mayor.
No.
I, I think that it would be fine to adopt this resolution starting on March 19th and give it that extra time. I also just wanted Mayor to mention that we will come back with a separate resolution for the rainbow flags because we need to follow the same process for each town speech.
Yeah, so, and you're speaking very quietly again.
Oh, sorry.
The idea is we're not approving the rainbow flags tonight. That would come back to the council probably at the next meeting. But that's kind of what we're thinking makes sense. So other questions for staff?
In your discussions with the Chamber, was the intent that these would be annual? Like not, not one-time use?
You know, maybe we assumed, but I mean, my assumption was, I think the Chamber is finding their way. Let's put it that way. So I don't know that we got everything that we had hoped in that meeting. And maybe I didn't think to ask the right questions. But my thought was that this is an important thing. And once we're done with things in the summer, it may be that if these banners are still in good shape, we put them up for the, you know, late fall when people are starting to shop for holidays. Because it's, it's a nice thing for the town. So my thought is we could put them up again, but it would be something we could bring back to the council. Other questions for staff? Okay, so let's open it up to public comment. And we're, folks, two minutes, but I'm going to also go with my warning again. So I want to remind folk to stay on the subject matter jurisdiction, which is right now the authorization to put banners up that support the Chamber's work in the current form that we have them in the supplement as well. And also to stay within orderly conduct. If you do not do this, I will cut you off. This is your warning now, so I will not be giving a warning at the time. Thank you. So first speaker, please.
Hi, Jim Cosgrove. I'm not trying to yuck your yum here on these banners, but my original response is they're kind of odd. Do they fit in with what we're trying to do in Fairfax? And also, if we're looking to promote, the whole idea is to promote business in the restaurants and in the stores, are we putting them downtown? Or should we place them on the main artery?
They're all downtown, that's where the lampposts are.
But, no, I understand, but I mean, are we able to, most of the traffic comes through Sir Francis Drake going out to the beach and to capture that, capture that traffic in order to bring them into Fairfax? If we're really wanting to promote Fairfax, the whole idea is we're trying to advertise, right?
Okay.
Placement, 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 that's all my.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yuri Fairfax. My only comment is I think that I would like to see some sort of like continuity with the aesthetics. For example, like you have this logo for Fairfax with the deer of the mountain. And I think that I would like to see the banners kind of coincide with the aesthetic that you have with the town logo so that we, I think it, something that looks a little bit more serious. I just think that the font styles, I don't know. In my opinion, I think we need different font styles and some banners that coincide more with, with the logo of the town, I think. I think, in my opinion, that's just my opinion. But I think that it would look nicer. We'd have a little bit more serious look to it, I think, in my mindset. A changed font set and stuff like that.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Todd Greenberg. So those of you who don't know, Yuri has long made posters, rock and roll posters, and he's got a lot of experience in this. I know that the people that have been hard at work at the Chamber, Lizelle was at the last meeting. They've put a lot of thought into this. And I want to give for those of you who are out there listening or some of you who might not have read the actual town financial records, as seems to have happened sometimes, what the percentages mean in this report in the resolution. It talks about 14.2% of the town's general fund coming from sales taxes. That number, that 14.2%, is actually $1,044,000 in one of the consent calendar items, which I won't get to talk about that we should be talking about. That being said, I also want to point out a couple of other things that might serve the public well. So that's where a lot, where a seventh of this town's budget is coming from, from the businesses here. So the Chamber of Commerce is really important to support. However it gets done, it should be something that is thought of as one of the main funding sources to this town's revenues. Now, a couple of things in this report that needs some clarity. It seems like tonight we're talking about 18. The report talks about up to 30 of these. It uses different numbers. At 18, it's $300 to hang them. At 30, it's $538. That's 1,667 at 18 or 1,793 at 500. I'm not sure why it goes up when you're hanging more of them. The total talked about at the bottom line in the report is 4574, but 18 at the 210 per banner would be 4,000.
Thank you.
You don't want to hear it, do you?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Renu Malhotra. During this discussion, it made me think about previous banners, maybe. I don't know what the condition is, but historical ones. And it might be fun to bring back some old ones sometime. I'm not saying for this one, I'm not saying replace this one. I'm not saying anything about the design of this, but just that don't forget about the old ones, if they still exist. I'm just asking the question. Something to consider. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark Bell. Wow, more of the town's money going out. I could maybe support this if we weren't giving the parklets away for free. You know, if you're paying 30 cents a square foot for the restaurants to have parklets. You know, at a dollar a square foot, there would be a fund to pay for this, but there's not. You're talking about 12 to 20 million dollars to fix the roads, but we continue to see 5,000 here, 10,000 here, 25,000 over there. Where's the economy? If the businesses are trying to get people who live in Fairfax to shop for a, a, a short period, if these banners are only going to be up for a couple of weeks, why don't they give a 10% discount? All you have to do is show that you live in Fairfax. I'm sure people will show up. People wait for gasoline even though it's 10 cents cheaper, and they spend that waiting to get to the pump. So I don't understand why the town continues to subsidize businesses, especially now that the COVID-19 is over as far as staying in place, et cetera. We gave money to the businesses then. We gave them a break on the park, on the parklets. We're now basically giving them the parklet space as square footage. There should be enough money from that that the town should not have to be spending five, almost $5,000 to put up banners.
Thank you. And next speaker, please.
Thank you, council. Personally, I like seeing the different banners that support our town. I think it's good for the town. I think it catches our eye. I think it brings people in to be aware that there's something off in our town. What I, I would like to see that the benefits or the benefactors of the flags be more financially participating so that it's not, even though I think it's a good expense for the town, just so that they can take some ownership. That said, I'd also like to see more flags. And I'd like to see specifically after what happened tonight, I'd be the first one, I'll donate money to this. If Fairfax wants to put up a flag that we say we support our Jewish community. There's no reason for the attacks. And if we're really thinking about the public good, I think that is. And to also show that we're inclusive, come on. We've heard more anti-Semitic remarks than we ever have. I personally, and that's why I said I'll donate money towards this. I'd love to see a flag that says, hey, Fairfax is inclusive for everybody. And here's another group that we love to have in our community and done tremendous amounts for all of humanity. And I think that's as important as anything. But again, all the different flags gives an opportunity to see something for the moment to say, oh yeah, look, that's all part of our community. And it does generate commerce for the town and all the people benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next speaker, please. I don't see anyone in the room. Are there hands raised?
There are hands raised on Zoom. The first speaker is Kay, followed by Mallory.
Um, why don't I make my caution?
Go, you go.
Okay, so for folks on Zoom, just a reminder that we need to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction, which at this point is dealing with flying banners, which support the Chamber of Commerce and business in town. We also need to stay within orderly conduct of the business of the council. And I'm giving you a warning now that I will cut you off if you do not stay within those boundaries. Thank you.
The first speaker is Kay, followed by Mallory. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi, I just have, um, we're talking about a couple of weeks. I keep hearing that, but when I look at the temporary non-commercial sign regulations, it says, so it's, this is all about dates. So if not concerning a particular event, then the sign may be posted for 67 days. And then the referendum says 18 lampposts, the March beginning on or about March 1st and ending May 31st to express the town's support for local businesses. So that is to get, I'm sorry, significantly a lot longer than a couple of weeks. So what am I missing?
Thanks, Kay. We'll, we'll deal with that afterwards, after public comment. Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Mallory, followed by Ursula. Mallory, you're unmuted.
Hi. I have a question. Is there a way that we can keep track to see if actually these banners help the people's, the Chamber's sales? And I think that would, that would answer a lot of questions for us. It might just be a waste to do this if it doesn't improve anything. And I also think that the, the Chamber should pay a little bit more if they want to have these, this advertised, advertising. And are the, the signs that were up where it says one word each shop and whatever it was, is that going to be the, are those going to be the signs? And if that is true, I think we have enough artists here to, to make it better than just having three little words on those signs. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ursula, followed by Sarah. Ursula, you're unmuted.
I'm sorry, it's getting late. I just wanted to ask where we're going to put the white Pride banner.
The next speaker is Sarah, followed by Johnny. Sarah, you're unmuted.
Hello, my name is Sarah. I live at 55 Maple Avenue. I would rather see niggers and.
The next speaker is Johnny. Johnny, you're unmuted.
Yeah, I'm opposed to the gay flag.
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, uh, thank you. So bringing it back, just one question for the Town Manager. It was brought up that our sign regulation allows people to keep up signs for 67 days. And I believe by the council taking this action, we could allow the banners to be up longer than the 67 days. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. This is town speech. These are banners on town infrastructure that the town is regulating and not making available for anyone.
Okay, so it's different than if an individual wanted to put a banner up. One of the things I want to point out is the Chamber had quite a list of things that they wanted to do for their campaign. One of the things was the banner across Sir Francis Drake that you all have seen. And they had hoped that we would pay for the installation, which it costs us quite a lot to install. And we said, they'd raised money for the banner, which is great. So they're, they have skin in the game. But we said, no, because there are many nonprofits who use that banner and everybody would want us to pay for that. And it's not something we can do, and it costs us a lot to have our guys put that stuff up. There are other things that they wanted to do. We did not offer to pay for those. This seemed like the one, the one item that we could do that would help bring more revenue into the town, help attract more businesses. And I believe as Mr. Greenberg pointed out, sales tax is a big portion of our monies that we have in the council. So it seemed like this was a small investment that we could make to support the Chamber. And I want to just point out that the council has supported the Chamber over the years for a number of things that we don't always highlight. We pay for a lot of things such as the Winter Fair. We had police officers working full-time, paying overtime that we did not get reimbursed for. So we, we want to help support businesses in this town. We want to do it with a light hand and do as much as we can with a limited amount of funds. So with that, are there a motion?
I support it and be happy to make a motion.
Yeah, I just have one final comment. In the future, I appreciate the presentation, but in the future, if we could have a color copy in our packet to review something like this. So you had to, can't, yeah, well, it's available online, but. And then I guess I just wanted to acknowledge and appreciate the comment that came back related to what I perceive to be as branding, you know? And I do think there's opportunity here. And also just that the rainbow is, is a theme that we're going to see in the future too. So that feels like potentially, so I, I think, you know, I think they're lovely. I'm in support, but I think there should be a lot of more opportunity for input, I guess.
Okay.
Moving forward.
Okay, well, thank you. One thing I want to add before someone makes the motion is I want to say that we need to keep, change one date in the resolution to say, starting March 1, I mean, March 19th, but ending May 30th. So I would just make that one change to the resolution and staying with our date of May 30th. And if for some reason the Chamber completely disagrees with this, then I think we would not go through with it.
Okay. Yeah, and I just want to say I, I did attend the last meeting of the Chamber of Commerce, and it's really great energy. And it's also a group that's really trying to reboot and regroup and. And, um, I would like to support that energy. And I know a lot of towns do support their chambers to some extent. Um, as sort of a form of economic development. Um, so I think it's important that we continue that. And I know the town has done this well before I ever came on board.
So if somebody liked to make the motion, how about Councilmember Hellman?
I'll make a motion.
Do I have to say the dates that you?
Correct.
I, I make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing the display of Chamber of Commerce banners, authorize use of staff time to place banners, authorize town manager to pay for printing of authorized banners. Um, with the noted change to the dates, the dates on attachment B, is it?
Of the supplement.
Of the supplement that it would be, um, the Chamber of Commerce campaign in support of local businesses for up to 18 downtown lampposts for the month of March 2024, ending May.
Just a friendly amendment, I would say, beginning on March 19th and ending on May 30th.
So lampposts beginning on March 19th and ending on April 30th. May 30th.
Correct. I think we got it.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, um, Madam Clerk, would you do a roll call vote?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Catrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay, uh, we're gonna move on to consent. And, um, I want to make one change in consent. And that is, the council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action vote. In the alternative, items on the consent calendar may be removed by any town council or staff member for a separate discussion and vote. Public comment for items on the consent calendar happens once rather than after each individual item. During the public comment period on consent items, speakers may comment on any items from this section of the agenda. Each speaker will have, and I'm changing this to three minutes, and may only speak once. So, uh, Madam Clerk, if you could change the timer to three minutes for consent calendar public comment. Okay, uh, with that, I want to ask if anyone on the dais has any questions or would like to pull an item from consent. Seeing none, uh, let's go ahead and open public comment. But I, just because tonight's been a little wild, I'm gonna go ahead and do my caution again. And that is, please, please stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the consent calendar only items. And also stay within the orderly conduct of the business of the council. And this is my warning that I will cut people off in the room or on Zoom who do not stay within those parameters. So with that, we'll open it up to public comment on the consent calendar.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. Uh, Barbara, thank you for the extra minute. Wow, I feel so lucky. Rather than having nine seconds per consent calendar item, there's 13 consent calendar items here versus three items on the regular agenda. I'm gonna have 13 seconds total for each item. With that being said, I'm asking you to pull items 5, 6, 9, 11, 12, 16, and 17 for public comment, knowing that you won't, knowing that you don't really care what we say. There's not many people here. God, we've all stuck around because we care about the town. But you don't care about what we think, do you? Okay, so, knowing that the clock is ticking and I've got two and minutes and nine seconds left, I'm gonna go in order of importance here. Number nine, waive second reading by title only and adopt an ordinance amending Title 17. Basically, this is workforce housing overlays that affect three zoning districts in downtown Fairfax that will allow 40 to 60-foot tall buildings to be built here with high density. It's gonna throw Fairfax into construction for decades. It's gonna disrupt this town dramatically. There have been changes made and you are looking to waive the second reading. This is wrong. This needs to be pulled and talked about by the public. This is the wrong way to go about doing this. You're ruining this town. Number 16, adopt a resolution authorizing the temporary closure of certain streets for West Marin Little League, uh, for their debut. Okay, that's great. I'm a big fan of Little League. I play Little League too. I support it. It's, everyone's the fabric of this community there. The parade's gonna be great. What are you going to do about the homeless problem that we have with the buckets of, I'm not even gonna say the word, that are being emptied into the creek? And the problems that are occurring up there next to our vulnerable young?
This is off topic. I will cut you off.
Okay, so I'm asking you to do something about that if you're gonna be closing the streets.
Off topic.
Okay, next. 17, adopt a resolution authorizing the town manager to collaborate with Marin County on the submittal of rebuilding American infrastructure sustainability equity raise grant application for Belinas Road project. There's no mention of downtown Fairfax here and Belinas Road. And there's no long-term planning, no plan articulated for downtown Belinas Road and the necessary repairs.
Thank you.
Hi, Mark Bell. Just like to bring up that, while I guess thanks are in order for our extra minute, you're still in violation of California Code Regulations Title 23 Subsection 13.3 regarding consent calendars, which states that anyone from the public can have an item pulled from the consent calendar and discussed. Uh, I do have a question. Uh, when we're talking about the resolution authorizing the town manager on number 12 for the Climate Action Coordinator Services, uh, it was my understanding that there was a second person now involved in that. And all I saw was, uh, uh, one position being discussed. I thought there were two people. I thought there was, uh, he had a, uh, an aide or an helper on that issue. I'd like, I'd like that to be answered. And then of course, really the question is, what is he doing for his $100,000 a year or $50,000 for us? Or is it more than that actually, when you add in all the benefits, et cetera? Because what I recall, uh, he wasn't helping out the residents of the town of Fairfax by trying to have everyone go totally electric. And then we just had yet another power outage. So how many people were cold? How many people, like, started their gas generators? How many people fired up their barbecues? How many people lit charcoal in their barbecues? It's counterproductive. I think we're fine with the volunteer committee.
Thank you. Uh, any other speakers in the room? Please get up so, um, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Frank Eger. Item nine. I'm greatly concerned over the adoption of the ordinance facilitating the redevelopment of downtown Fairfax. Sites designated for up to 85 units per acre and five to seven stories with the density bonus laws, plus the loss of jobs and sales tax from those existing businesses include the shops and vet clinic between Harry's Hill and Fitzpatrick Plumbing and Heating, the Fairfax Garage and Body Shop, Fairfax Square on Belinas Road, the School Street Plaza's 1.92 acres that has 12 small businesses, including the Marin Alliance. They'll be gone. Uh, they're allowed up to 164 units. The environmental impact report was prepared by Diet and Basha, the project contractor, and it never went out to bid. That's a clear conflict of interest. Sacramento legislators approved 16 new housing bills in 2023, preempting California's 481 cities and 58 counties by removing local community constraints on, on housing. This is the largest unfunded state mandate ever approved by the legislature. It means that local residents will be responsible to fund all necessary services for the new housing developments. Given the fire, landslide, and flooding hazards in Fairfax, we've got one road in and one road out, it will be impossible to have up to 598 housing units built in Fairfax in seven years. This is exactly what the state is planning. So developers will have free rein to build whatever they want in our town. There will be very little affordable housing built, mostly market rate. It's called trickle-down for-profit housing. That's, that's where it's going with this Diet and Basha plan. I urge you to vote no tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Town Council. I think some of Frank's comments are really timely and something to think about. I don't think that we should be waiving by second title when we make amendments. I think that's improper. But really what I'd like to speak to tonight on the consent calendar, I think that this also causes consternation in your community. It causes lots of people to come up here. And I very much appreciate the extra minute. I'd like to see that consistent. I think that if the town council took the time, if you want to have these consent items, I think you should have a clear policy that says, hey, there's enough people in opposition to something, maybe we need to pull it. I see a lot of times when you guys are up here speaking, and I'd probably be guilty myself, some of your comments are really to try to solicit support for you, for your upcoming elections, for a position. And I appreciate that and accept that. But if we could also restrict some of the time that you guys come up here and sometimes really lecture to us and pontificate, we could allocate that time to bringing up additional items that the community has raised time and time again a concern. Can we please discuss it? I agree that the consent calendar is very necessary, kind of like renewing our insurance, renewing a bond measure that just has been renewed on an annual basis or something like that. The items that really involve the town, the future of the town, these are things that should have public input. And I appreciate that you guys have your own position and you want to appease different groups that'll support you on something else with the same thing. But we should all have an opportunity to speak at the table. And the consent calendar is taking that away from us. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next speaker, please.
Jim Cosgrove, Bay Road. And on item number nine, um, regarding Frank's comments, and something to follow up from the hearing that was discussed yesterday on the adoption of this ordinance. Um, and I think it's important to look forward, uh, in this. It was the parking demand, which the parking and the cars are gonna create a huge issue. The topic was discussed about a parking demand study and I asked what was that? And the consultant, if I remember correctly, um, gave a response that the parking ordinance, uh, the parking demand study is that they asked the developer to, I'm not quoting it per se, but they'll ask the developer, if the people that are gonna be living in the house, uh, need a car. And then, in other words, that the people in the, in the apartment complex will find an agreement elsewhere on the parking. I, I don't understand. The, the, that's like putting the cart in front of the horse. Because what you're doing now is, you have to consider that upfront and agreements unless he's pre-selling the spots for the house. It doesn't make any sense. The parking demand study has to be looked at from the flow of traffic and the amount. Look it up on the internet what a parking demand study is, and it will show you. And it was not what the consultant commented on. And it's just, it seemed like it's, with all due respect, it seemed like it was off the cuff because it, it, it doesn't tie down. The other concern with this is that I've seen it, um, unfortunately, in the industry that I'm in. These multinational companies, if we don't really tie down the titles and the deeds and these agreements, this town is gonna be bullied by these multinational companies or these huge real estate companies that have departments and have tons of money of real estate attorneys that are gonna have agreements. And that we have to, unfortunately, the town will have to lawyer up, I hate that term, and get proper, you know, well-studied real estate attorneys so they can protect the rights here in Fairfax. Because the parking is gonna create an issue which is gonna trickle back down onto the flow of fire here in Fairfax. And someone on Zoom last time spoke about doing a fire drill in Fairfax so we can really see what it would look like. And I think it would be a train wreck. And thank you for the three minutes. I really appreciate it. And I'm, I just think this Title IX is, it's a disaster. And it's, it's really, it's really a shame. But, um, I understand to a point that our hands are tied to some extent. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, other speakers in the room? Uh, seeing none. Do we have a number of people on Zoom?
We have two speakers on Zoom.
Okay, go ahead.
The first speaker is Mallory, followed by Sierra. Mallory, you're unmuted.
Okay, um, I just want to back up, uh, both Michael and Frank. And I agree with both of them. And the gentleman who just spoke, um, he's so right on about getting a, I believe, uh, an independent parking study. And I think we, we need to think, you guys need to think more about what this is going to do to the town. And especially what's it going to do to the town when people can't leave when there is a disaster. And I just want you guys to think about this because if you're gonna, if you're gonna back this up, you're gonna have to think about the people who are gonna be in trouble. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Sierra. Sierra, you're unmuted.
There we go. Hi, everybody. Here we are still, again. You know, you've heard me. You know where I'm at. I agree with Frank, Michael, pretty much everyone. What's there to say? It's like local control. It's like, here we are. What about fires? What about water? What about climate? What about roads? What about infrastructure? What about traffic? What about egress? You know, we need housing and we also need living environments. It's like, you know, we need to fix this. Um, what kind of future are we actually creating here? And what are we just kicking down the road? Things do not look good environmentally, politically, socially, um, I don't know. And consent calendar, here we are. I'm kind of rambling. I'm mumbling a little bit. I'm dismayed. I'm heartbroken. I'm frustrated. I'm pissed. It's our world. And it's just, oh, well, it's just too bad. It's like, there goes the children's center. It's like, oh, well, we don't, it's like, it's just too bad. It's like, oh, well, it's like, it's just too bad. And it's just too bad. And that's, here we are. We're alive. This is our watch. What are we creating? What are we leaving behind? You know, you guys hear me say this all the time. It's like, what's in our trash cans? It's like, we barely look at that. Let's all go buy a new electric car and a Tesla and speaking of electrifying everything, which we don't have the, um, bandwidth to electrify things, we just had our power up for a week. How many people couldn't cook or couldn't do anything or couldn't even heat their house? You know, not granted, we overly heat and cool our houses anyway.
So Sierra, you're not on topic. This is the consent calendar. I'm gonna have to.
Well, it is the topic. It has to do with building and consent calendar and following the state mandates. And it pretty much. And it pretty much is on topic.
Well, it's really not, so I'm gonna have to cut you off unless you can stay on topic.
You know, you just don't understand the topic that I'm talking about. And it's a lot broader. And I'm sorry if you don't understand it, but we're in big trouble. It is on topic, and we got work to do. And building more crap isn't gonna fix it, and neither is consuming things. And what I was saying before about the electricity-
Thank you, Sierra. I'm cutting you off.
Thank you very-
Are there any more speakers on Zoom?
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, bringing it back. Before we, I wanna bring up a couple of things that are on consent. One is that reappointing Robert Jansen to the Fairfax Planning Commission. I wanna thank him for his service and being willing to re-up. He's now the chair of our planning commission and doing an excellent job. We have a proclamation that I'm not going to read because Tony DeFrancis couldn't join us tonight. And Tony has been doing the minutes for the town council for at least 30 years. And she's retiring, but she's still doing minutes for other places. But this is one that she felt was time to step back on. So we wanna thank Tony for all her years of service. She swims right near my house, so I see her all the time. And she's done a great job for us. The other proclamation is it's Black History Month. So it's the entire month. And in the interest of time, I won't read it, but I hope that folks take an opportunity to read it. And we're grateful that it's Black History Month. And with that, did anyone have any comments? Oh, I see Councilmember Catrano, the finger.
Finger wagging. Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a couple just quick comments. One was related to Mr. Bell's comment, question really, about the climate coordinator and the two roles that he had remembered. I believe he was thinking of, we had actually a climate action fellow from SEI. And that fellow supported Sean and did work for both Fairfax and San Anselmo for a certain amount of time for the stint of the fellowship and did some great work, I might add. And just to be like, there are things that, you know, we have in our climate action plan and that Bruce and folks on the Climate Action Committee are trying to champion within our community. But then there are also all of these obligations that we face at the state level with legislation that mandates that we do certain types of reporting. Some of that is related to our, you know, greenhouse gas inventory, but other stuff is related to like SB 1383, which is all around food waste. It's something that Paul, the climate fellow, helped out on as well. But it's something that we are now mandated to do as it relates to how we handle food waste and compost in our community. So, you know, there are a lot of things that Sean takes care of, and he reports on those things in the quarterly reports that we're all grateful that he has and that do come on consent. But just wanted to flag that because I think it's important to clarify. The other thing I just wanted to clarify, Mr. Greenberg's comment related to the final item on consent, which is an item I care about deeply, which is Belinus Road. I just wanted to clarify because there was a comment that there was no plan articulated for downtown for Belinus Road. And actually, it was at our very last meeting that we received our five-year transportation facilities management plan. It was item two. And item two, we had our Public Works Director report that in year three of the five-year plan, that entire stretch of downtown for Belinus Road to Broadway is when the town is contemplating that work, in addition to some of the other work we're doing with the county higher up on Belinus Road. And in fact, Mr. Greenberg was the second person to comment on that item when it came. So I know you said, great report. So anyway, just wanted to add those two comments and thank staff for all the great reports, as always.
I think Councilmember Hellman had a question first, and then we'll move-
Or comment. Go ahead.
I just wanted to thank you for having the proclamation celebrating Black History Month and encourage the community to visit the Fairfax Library, which has a wonderful display honoring a lot of Black leaders and activists and authors and so forth. And yeah, that's all I wanna say.
Oh, thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Blash.
Okay, yeah, just following up on Councilmember Catrano's comments. Just wanted to know if the Belinus Road outline is on. It's on Attachment A of the five-year plan, page one. It's year 2026 of the five-year plan, and it outlines what would be going on around Lower Belinus Road. So it is in there, and it is in the works. And there was discussion of coordinating with MMWD and other utilities. I did want to mention, and I mentioned it last meeting, that I know people are concerned about how the consent calendar is done. Mr. Bell usually leaves before I say this, but the code that he is quoting pertains to a single agency of the state. And I believe it's Central Valley Flood Protection Board. So different public agencies have different protocols around consent calendar. So thank you.
One more quick comment, Madam Mayor, if I can, because Mr. Cosgrove had that comment about parking demand. And I just want, Janet, maybe you can clarify since we don't have some of the planning staff, but you've been intimately involved with supporting the planning department through this process, too. Andrew Hill's comment related to parking demand management. My understanding is we've assessed some of the traffic impacts and potential VMT, vehicle mile travel reduction, contemplated, which came to us for the environmental impact report for the housing element, separate from these different zoning packages. But that's one part of it. The other part, which Mr. Hill was bringing up, is, you know, we contemplate a certain number of parking stalls per unit in some of these sites that we've identified. But depending on the scope of the project that comes to the town, it could trigger a standalone parking demand management study or some, you know, what are the impacts associated with traffic for a new development? Is that right?
Yes, they'll have to do their own study. They'll have to, because we don't know right now exactly the project. We don't know what it's gonna be well enough to be able to study it. So when a project comes forward, that's part of what they have to do.
So it's the distinction between, you know, what we've done upfront is the more of the programmatic environmental impacts. And there will be site-specific impact studies or, you know, impact analyses. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify that for the public. Thank you.
So did anybody wanna pull anything or did someone wanna make a motion?
I'm happy to move consent.
Second. All right, so that was Councilmember Catrano moved consent. And the second was Vice Mayor Blash. Would you do a roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Catrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes, I wanna mention that it's a little after 10 o'clock. We don't really have any further items except a few future agenda items, a few things. Do we need a motion to say just move on to finish it up? Okay, so would someone like to make a motion to say let's continue?
Yeah, so moved.
Okay, would someone second?
Second.
Okay, so that was Councilmember Catrano, second. Hellman.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Catrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay, future agenda items. And before you mention one, I just wanna mention that we plan for the March meeting to be discussing the vendor for the survey for the for the road bond. And at that point, unfortunately, we weren't able to find a vendor yet that was within reasonable financial. So town manager says she will have that. And at that point, we would appoint a subcommittee to work on the survey, which I know is something you're interested in.
Thank you. And I just wanted to address the comment on, this is under the subject of future agenda items. So the implementation is something that I know staff has been working on. The idea is that we're gonna have a robust staff report with options and a lot of due diligence as far as, you know, really something that the council can consider. And so I know I've been in conversations with both Councilmember Catrano and town manager Heather Abrams. So I think we're targeting March for that, but I don't know.
I think that's my understanding is that we would be targeting the March meeting. Town manager Abrams, do you have something on that? I think we're looking at the March meeting. Hopefully, everything will come together.
Yeah, we're targeting the March meeting, but I do, we're, we have a proposal right now that is not ready to bring forward. And so I wanna make sure that it's right and that it's gonna be something that the council's ready to discuss.
Okay, well, I mean, just, I know it's late. I gotta talk louder.
Okay. Sorry.
All right, well, we're targeting the March meeting, so hopefully, everything will stay on track. Anything else? No?
I have one more item, which is, since it was brought up, the pride flags. Just hoping when that comes back that we could also bring it back holistically with some of the other things we did last year, including the crosswalk and what it would take for Lauren and to work with the artists and residents to rebutefy that spot for that month. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we have that. And all right, let's move on. Council reports and comments. We already have those in the packet. Thanks, everybody, for submitting yours if you have anything to add. No? Oh, wait, see something. I see a light on. No? Okay, town managers' report. I'm sorry, what? We're done with that part. Okay, those are in the, those were part of consent. They are in the packet, the council reports. No, they were in, I said they are in writing in the consent calendar. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the town managers' report.
I'll keep it brief. So I just want to acknowledge all the hard work of our staff, especially over the weekend with the storm. Really a tremendous effort. Ross Valley Fire was incredible in responding to our many, many calls, including a period of three hours where there were more than 30 calls. So that's pretty incredible. And our Public Works crews. And I noted with some delight that we didn't have flooding at Town Hall or any of those normal places. So that's really nice to see. And we will continue to offer things like the electric charging stations if needed, if there's an extended outage.
Let's be clear on that. So we wanna thank PD for setting up the charging stations kind of in the hallway of Town Hall. And then thank you for Ann Manis and folks setting up in the pavilion the charging station. So hopefully, we won't be experiencing this again. But now I think we're more prepared to do it more quickly.
Indeed.
Okay. And with that, I wanna adjourn the, thank you. I wanna adjourn the memory in memory of Jim Ringsize, who some of you knew, who ran our framing store for more than 30 years. Very sad story. Dirk Ujkaas, who is, was the Flying Dutchman and operated in the pavilion for seven years, bringing a lot of joy to children in our area. And we have something planned for April to commemorate him. And Philip Joseph Soldivini Jr., who I'm sure Frank knew, who was one of the co-founders of The Car Show. And so we're sad to see him go. It's just been a really sad month, so many passings. So with that, I wanna thank everybody for attending in person or on Zoom. Did you wanna add something on the in-memory? Okay, come up. It's really just in-memory, no other comments.
Relax. Thank you for allowing me to speak. You should allow me to speak on the other things on the agenda, but I wanted to speak about Dirk. Dirk, I don't know how much you guys actually knew him. He's been my tenant for about 18 years. And Dirk is truly a nice man. He is truly the person that if you spend time with him, you want to be a better person. He sets that example that we all take a pause. And we look back and say, I can do a better job and I can present something better. He is that example that we should all remember. So I appreciate that you acknowledged him. Thank you.
Thank you. And just so for the folks, The Flying Dutchman is still in Northgate. And I know their head coach, and they're still continuing on. So that's great. Thank you all for attending and have a good night.